Welcome to Committee of the Whole Meeting, February 16th, 2021. For everybody who's here on Zoom meeting and watching online, welcome. I'd like to start the meeting in the usual way. But with an indigenous greeting that we are pleased to be here today on the traditional territory of Treaty VI. We acknowledge all those who share a deep connection with this land. City of Beaumont respects the histories, languages and cultures of all of Canada's first peoples. Whether they be of First Nation, Métis or Inuit descent. And appreciates that their presence continues to enrich Canada's vibrant communities. We are all treaty people, the peace treaties bind us all. And that brings us to. As soon as I can find it again. Uh, no, so part two of the agenda, modifications to the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
Thank you Chair, administration has no amendments to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Could I get a committee member to move the agenda as presented, please? Councillor Hendricks.
Move yours.
Thank you. And if we've got the voting buttons working. Would you please indicate your votes? That passes, how many votes have I got? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So the motion is carried unanimously. Um, brings us to section three, presentations and delegations. I'm very pleased to welcome MLA Brad Rutherford. For a discussion regarding various topics raised by council. Council members were canvassed as the topics that they wanted to discuss. Hi Brad. And the topics that they wanted to discuss were consolidated to remove and to remove ambiguity and and replication and duplication. Um, so we've ended up with the agenda that is in front of us tonight. I'm gonna go through this. Brad, I'm hoping you're going to be able to address each of these topics. There's seven on the line and what I'd like to do is to give you the opportunity to speak to each one. And then open the session for questions from the, from council. If that's okay with you, Brad. You're on mute, I can't hear you.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
All right, great, thank you.
Yep. No, sorry, go ahead.
Am I going to?
Never mind, that's okay.
Um, so first question was, and the one that I think is on everybody's mind right at the moment is the, is a bunch of questions related to COVID-19. The vaccination rollout update, priorities and scheduling, how the municipalities can help. An update on when restrictions might or could be lifted. Uh, impact on mental health and provincial support for that. A roadmap out of lockdown restrictions. And support arrangements available to small, medium businesses during the lockdown were all topics that were raised by council. Brad, would you be willing to speak to all of those?
I will try to cover off all of that and if I miss something, just let me know. Uh, the vaccination rollout obviously was interrupted by supply as we, as we got into the end of January. Uh, for most of February, we were, where the province was able to administer second doses only. Um, and as they were trying to go through their rollout program. Uh, which is, has the phase one, uh, it's broken into two different parts, but they're in phase one still. Uh, we are expecting that we're going to have some more consistent supply coming up, but still reduce numbers. And the federal government is still talking about meeting the contractual responsibilities from Pfizer and Moderna by the end of March. Uh, so we should, we should see this week a much bigger allocation of both Pfizer. Uh, and then followed by Moderna, which is coming every couple of weeks, I think three weeks actually on that cycle. Uh, and in terms of what the municipalities can do, I know that the province is at a point where they are able to administer far more doses than what they have. Uh, where the municipalities are going to fit in specifically, I, I think that'll be up to Alberta Health and the Health Ministry. Or possibly pick to, which is the Cabinet Committee. Uh, to come up with that kind of plan, I think they're going to use pharmacists as an example as we get into later stages. Uh, as well, uh, to help that rollout. The volume is probably going to increase as we get through to the end of February into March. Uh, and the province has let us know that they're ready for that volume increase. And I think they're going to be able to administer vaccines quite quickly. Uh, making sure that they're hitting those targeted groups in phase one, one A, one B. Uh, and then starting to work through the next phases. So phase two, cabinet has not brought out who is included in phase two yet. I imagine they'll do that shortly. Uh, but I think the, the overarching concern is just a steady supply, which helps in the planning and then getting those doses administered as well. Uh, in terms of supports, there was a $5,000 relaunch grant that came up several months ago. An additional 15,000 was added by the province. Uh, there's been some clarity and some reworking of federal programs around rental assistance as well to help businesses. I have and will continue to maintain, uh, you know, the same open question to people in the business community. As to where the, the supports fall short. Uh, is there any gaps where people are not able to access the funds? We've come up, there's been a few examples of still those gaps existing and trying, trying to help people with the, with the application. Uh, and into the ministry as well, uh, to get answers back. Uh, some of them have been quick and getting, and getting things done within a couple of days. Others have been a bit slower, so the office is always able to help. You know, phone into the ministry and reach out and try to advocate on their behalf. I, I know that for a lot of these businesses, uh, what they're going to be looking for is, you know, the ability to really get a fair chance at. You know, just being able to operate and, and to. Be able to generate the revenue that they were generating before. Well, the heaviest restrictions are on about 1% of businesses. Uh, and then there's other restrictions in, in the broader group. It still affects a lot of people and this pandemic has affected a lot of people in a variety of ways. So it is not lost on the government, that additional supports may, may be necessary. I leave that to the government to, to announce and to, to deal with as we go into the future. But for me, the feedback that helps is where does it fall short? Uh, and how can we close any gaps or loopholes that are, that are existing so that businesses that are affected are able to get that support as well? Uh, and then, sorry, Martin, can you just remind me of a couple of the other questions?
Um, impact on mental health and provincial support.
On mental health, there was 53 million allocated for, for mental health. Uh, there was a few Beaumont locations and Laduke locations that, that received some funding. Uh, and that was throughout different, different communities. Uh, so one was a church in Beaumont and one was, I think, FCSS and in, in Laduke. Uh, that received some, some funding to help with mental health and to make sure that there was additional supports for folks. This has been, uh, this has been ongoing, that, that happened early on. Uh, they realized the, the, how necessary this is. Uh, and it's all, it's really incumbent upon all of us, right, to be reaching out to, um, to one another and to people who, who may need some support and to. And to encourage that they reach out for assistance as, as well and really touch base with one another. Uh, what I get from, from phone calls in the last week or two is that there's a growing fatigue. Uh, with restrictions and people are feeling frustrated and that, I think it's probably a natural response to, to what's happening. There's a lot of stress around this and it's been prolonged as well. We didn't come out of a, right, right out of a boom into something like this. There, there's been struggles for a number of years. Uh, and then we're, we're hit with this and there's, you know, three aspects that really, uh, you affect people. You have any, the energy price collapse, you have global recession, and then you have restrictions on a variety of businesses within, within our own province. So, uh, there, there's a lot happening at once. Uh, and when it comes to the, the phased plan, it's four phases. So some of the biggest changes occurred several weeks ago with schools going back in. Uh, so that's around 700,000 students. Uh, personal services by appointment were opened up like salons. Uh, and then we got to February 8th, where, with, where restaurants and, and some of the other aspects of indoor fitness were relaxed as well. They, they put a three-week parameter in between each step, including other metrics like hospitalization. Uh, just to see how each step is going to affect the case rate. So. It's going to take, for the February 8th changes, I think it takes a week to 10 days before you start seeing it in the numbers. Uh, as to what effect it may or may not have and how it's doing. Uh, that's going to be obviously monitored very closely. The daily case rate is an indicator of, of hospitalization. It's been sort of a consistent metric as to what your hospitalization is going to be about a week out. So they, they're watching that. Uh, and I've reminded folks of, of what, what really prompted the government late November, early December was the, the hospitalizations were increasing. Uh, they had increased from late October to the beginning of December by about 500% or 600%. If that was left unchecked, that, that growth would have overwhelmed our healthcare system. So the, the sacrifices are not for, uh, not for nothing. Uh, they, they have, they have shown a decrease in our COVID cases. Uh, our hospitalizations are coming down, the ICU rates are coming down. Uh, and the relief on our healthcare system is happening. And we need to maintain that as we work through a vaccination program. Uh, and then get into spring where viral transmission is, is just typically lower. Uh, in, in warmer weather, in, in our summertime as well. Any other things I can touch on on that?
I was, uh, one of the questions that was asked was a roadmap out of lockdown restrictions. But I, I think as far, unless there's anything you can add, I think you've already touched on it.
There, there's four steps on the Alberta.ca website. Uh, so it's a, it's sort of, it's, it's a tiered, uh, tiered set of reopening. And it's going to come down to, you know, the three weeks between each one and, and the hospitalization metric. Um, and when, you know, one of the things that people had asked me a lot for was what's the plan out? Uh, and that was sort of as we're getting late into January and February. We got past sort of a natural milestone, which is around the 21st of, of January. And people were, were trying to find some answers as to, okay, what does this look like now? What's the exit strategy? Uh, and so the government has put that plan together and it's, there's still metrics that, that have to be, have to be completed. Uh, in order to get to each step, the hospitalizations, for instance, remaining low, uh, as was one of them. And so that, that's, that's the plan. It's on, it's online and if any critiques of it, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask for, for councillor to hold up on for questions until you've, until you've addressed all each of the topics. Um, so the next one was, was Keystone XL, next steps.
So Keystone, um, the, the, there are some personal sensitivities to it for, for the Alberta government. My impression is that they are still trying to push senators and congressmen. Uh, and congresswomen in, in the United States on supporting this. Uh, probably if you follow any kind of US news, you would have seen trade unions as well, trying to pressure. Uh, the administration into reversing that decision. Uh, the, the crossing is done. Depending on how things happen politically in the United States in the future. Uh, there's an opportunity to use what is already existing there. Uh, it was unprecedented to revoke a presidential permit. Uh, and for a piece of infrastructure that was already built, the crossing is completed. Uh, there was First Nations buy-in as well. Uh, they, they tried to have numerous segments of it going at the same time, uh, using union labor. Uh, to, to make sure that in a time when people need jobs, that this, this was a source of income for many families. And unfortunately, uh, the, the permit had been revoked. Uh, part of that is, is how it was written originally and signed by President Trump at the time. Uh, but I, I don't think they've given up on it. Uh, it's, it's just another hurdle that we're going to have to contend with.
Okay, thanks for that update. Um, next topic was the railcar oil penalty clause. Can you, could you provide any kind of update on that?
So it, it depends on. Which direction the question is, is coming from, there's a couple of things. So the federal government regulates railways, so that's through Transport Canada. Uh, and the, the provincial government is not involved in rail companies' deals with, with the private sector. Um, if we're, if we're talking about the crewed by rail contracts that were signed by the NDP in, uh, just before the election in 2019. Uh, the government is divesting those contracts into the private sector. Uh, and has always been of the opinion that those contracts should not have been signed. And that they were going to lose money. Uh, and in fact, uh, given the, the issues that have occurred through 2020, that would have been exasperated. Uh, so although this is costing the, the taxpayers billions of dollars, the overall, there is overall savings for not having kept those contracts.
Okay, thank you. Um, next topic was elimination of childcare accreditation and new childcare regulations with the specific question, how do we ensure that quality is maintained?
So I think it was about 95% of licensed operators were accredited. Um, and so they were looking at it as a. Uh, being somewhat redundant, like BC had gotten rid of this. Uh, if, if almost all of your, your daycares have the accreditation, then it is not really showing one to the other what the benefit is. And so they removed that accreditation, but they're still maintaining within the legislation. Uh, you know, quality and safety, uh, wellbeing and child development. Uh, the, the legislation that came in, uh, we've had Minister Schultz do a virtual round table with local operators. Uh, that was back in December, I believe, on December 16th. Uh, she did that and really fueled a lot of questions. And the legislation also allowed for 24-hour and overnight care. It simplified and clarified some of the rules, uh, so they're easier to understand. It also allowed for digital records to be kept as opposed to, uh, you know, a physical paper record. And then it's risk-based licensing, uh, so that way licensing teams can spend more time with programs that are in need. Uh, and less on ones that are consistently, uh, meeting it or above the standards that are set. Now you're on mute.
I apologize for that. Sorry there, I muted myself there when, uh, because I was losing internet connectivity. All right, um, thank you for that one. Um, next one is impacts that changes to linear taxation model will have on rural municipalities. And the potential ripple effect to cost-sharing agreements with urban municipalities.
Well, well, how those agreements are going to play on the next few years, um, you know, I'm not going to speculate on it. And I think what we heard early on in the campaign in 2019 and before that was that rural crime was a growing issue. And people were looking for better response times. And in order to do that, you need more people. Um, it is the distances that RCMP have to cover are, you know, vast. In my experience in law enforcement, when I was in Edmonton, uh, there were, there were units close to almost any priority call within just a few minutes. Uh, but people I know in the RCMP, that could be an hour. Uh, and it's, in order to shrink that, you need to hire more officers. Uh, and by having municipalities, uh, I think that are under 5,000, uh, participate in paying for the policing that they receive. Is going to result in several hundred more officers and more civilian, uh, employees being hired on, which is going to help the RCMP. And what I hope is that the RCMP can, can meet those, uh, those requests. Uh, and make sure that they are, they're supplying the personnel that are being requested. Uh, and if we can add several hundred more officers, I think we're going to see better response times. Uh, and a reduction in rural crime, which, which is what the goal is. Uh, I think for, um, this coming year, it's about $20 million in addition for these rural communities. Uh, and then over the next, oh, and it doesn't increase over the next three or four years, that, that will increase to around 200 million.
Thank you. Um, I think we've, I think you've, we've jumped a question here. The, the, there was the topic of rural crime and police funding, which I, I think you were addressing. Um, but there was a question about a linear taxation model?
Are we talking about, okay, so are you, are you referencing then the one on? Sort of natural gas assets?
Yes, I think so. I think that's what linear taxation refers to.
About pipelines, our lines, Mr. Rutherford, about pipelines and the linear taxes going to the rural municipalities. And, and how that would impact some change around that taxation process to, but not my question, but just to help you along with it. Um, the urban versus rural divide on the, on that natural gas or oil pipelines, um, and the model that was relooked at by the province.
So the, they, they got the feedback on, on the four scenarios that they were looking at. Uh, at the time, it was Minister Allard who did the, the consultation, uh, that was started by Minister Madhu. And what they're looking at is a property tax freeze that would occur for a number of years. Um, on, on new development. Uh, and then they are going to be reassessing that, I believe, in the 2025 taxation year.
So do we know what impact that has on the, the rural, urban divide?
No, I, I, what, what the, what the rural municipalities are going to transfer is, is up to them and that negotiation. Uh, the reality is that for many of these companies, uh, their biggest expense was municipal taxes. Uh, and they were going to go under without some tax relief and losing the jobs that go with it. And then the municipal taxes that go with that. Uh, they're, they were looking at a way to help these companies survive. Uh, and, and this is the, the middle ground that they came up with.
Okay, thank you. All right, you've already addressed the rural crime and police funding, I think. So the only other, the only outstanding point was current and future MSI funding for municipalities?
So on the MSI, uh, I, I believe that with the budget coming up in 11 days. Um, we'll have to wait and see for that to be released on the 25th. Uh, and it'll be, I think, quite clear. Um, my expectation is, is that MSI will finish in its current form. Uh, and then there'll probably be a renegotiation between municipal affairs and municipalities on, on what it looks like in the future. Um, but as far as I understand, uh, MSI was about 963 million, Beaumont received 4 million. Uh, and for the operations side, Beaumont received about 136,000 of 30 million.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you for addressing all of those topics. I'd like to open the, the. The session to questions, does, is there anybody? Any councillors wishing to raise questions? Miss Stewart?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, appreciate it. Once again, Emily Rutherford, thanks for joining us tonight. I, I don't really have a question, but I really do appreciate, uh, you taking the time to be here tonight and cover these topics with us. I know some of them are of real importance to our municipality. Uh, I know we only got five or 10 minutes left in this session, so I, I won't take any more time, but I'll say, I'll say thank you now and really appreciate your time. And we'll turn it over to members of council.
I'll do it again, councillor Hendricks.
Thank you, uh, just a question that's on the list, which is daylight savings time. Any, any thought on where we're heading with that? We've signed, or at least the people of Beaumont have followed through our petitions and people of Alberta follow through petitions. It's gone to, gone to the caucus and I believe the, the rest of your group many times, so where are we at?
Uh, so I, I do know that, that Minister Gluvish is well aware of this. I think they did a broader consultation on where they wanted, or what Alberta's wanted the direction to be. Um, I'm not going to get ahead on what the, what legislation might be coming in this, this next sitting. Uh, but it is something that is clearly on their, their radar. Um, whether it comes this, this session or in the fall, I'm not, I'm not sure. But I, I think that there is some consensus that it's time for it to go.
Thank you, I'm just, just given that the rest of the country seems to be heading in that direction, Ontario and BC. So, uh, we, we probably need to be in lockstep with them to ensure that the time, time constraints across the country are all met. So, so thank you, just, just wanted to ask that question, so thanks.
Yeah. Councillor McCall's line?
Yeah, thanks, uh, Martin. Um, and Mr. Rutherford, again, thanks for coming in today. Just a really quick question, I had, had some folks ask me and so I wanted to get the official word from, from you guys, just around the COVID numbers. Um, so you talked about, you know, step two, step three, looking at the hospitalizations. You know, step two being 450 hospitalizations, step three, 300. If, if the numbers are lower, um, you know, lower than 300, um, is there a potential to jump straight to, to step three? Um, on the website, it says at least three weeks after step one, so I just, I just want you to clarify. Um, just to clarify that we still, if we, we're going to have to go through step two and step three, um, no matter what, what the numbers look like.
Yes, in, in some form, I, I know there's some leeway in the language that, that there could be things that come up. Uh, that, that might be modified, uh, but I think that the, the plan that they've set out is going to be in that three-week period. Because it's going to take just about half that time to, to, two-thirds of it, to see the change in, in cases based on what you just did. Uh, and, and so that's why they, they've set that, uh, and will, they'll be monitoring it, of course.
Yeah, perfect, thank you for that, that response. I mean, everyone wants to, to, to jump as quickly out of this as possible, but you got to take that methodical approach and appreciate you doing that. So that's the only question I, I had, Chair, just, uh, and thanks again, Emily Rutherford. And we're working hard for us on other initiatives in the background. Um, so I really appreciate you, you're helping push for Beaumont here, so thanks for the work you're doing on that. Um, hopefully get some good stuff soon.
Yeah.
Councillor Barnhart?
Thank you Chair Stout, and thank you MLA Rutherford for coming in and meeting with us. Just want to start by saying that I, it's really been a tough time for everyone. And I thought the province has done extremely well, considering all that's been going on in multiple, multiple directions. Uh, the economy and COVID and everything to go with that. So, um, I, I do appreciate how hard that's been. And, uh, on the, the one question that I have remaining from your presentation on the childcare regulations. Again, thanks to Minister Schultz for getting the regulations done. I, I wasn't expecting that that could happen with all that was going on, but she did get that done. And your comments about, um, why accreditation is no longer needed, I, I. I guess I, I want to respectfully disagree with that, having seen what the accreditation standards did for the field. It really raised the standard. And when, with the regulations, there just isn't that kind of detailed. Expectations, so again, while I appreciate all that's gone on and how difficult it is, I, I do want to say mostly, I'm very positive about the fact that the. Childcare was seen as an essential service in our communities and businesses, as well as families desperately need that to be the best quality it can be. So again, I'm more than happy to have a conversation with you at another date, but I just wanted to make sure that you heard that accreditation's loss is really a loss to quality. And I, um, I'm, I'm disappointed about that, but happy about many of the other things that are going on, so thank you.
I, I appreciate that and yes, I, I'd be very open to, uh, to having a conversation, uh, you know, further about it. Uh, I, I didn't get the, that same impression from the roundtable that we did, but happy to hear, um, uh, your perspective on it. And, and I don't think the intent is to try to allow for quality to, to drop. I think it's just to look at different ways of maintaining the quality that is there.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that.
Got to get off mute, yeah. Councillor Van Newkirk.
I love that sign.
Yeah, yeah, Brad, thanks for coming tonight. Here's a, here's an open-ended question for you. What are you most excited for in our region and in Beaumont specifically this year? What are you, what are you looking forward to?
Uh, well, there, there's lots of good things on the go, as we all know. Um, and, and we're, we're hoping for some good news soon on, on a couple of different projects. You know, one of the other things that I, I've been really pushing for is, is a Beaumont high school. Uh, I, I think that although utilization rate in, in the current, uh, one is not, is around 90%, I think. It, it's only going to take a couple of years, uh, for, for that to really exceed 100%. Um, and we can see the, the cohorts of kids coming up. Uh, so I, I'm hoping to get something announced, uh, really as soon as I can, but it's really, it's always, of course, it's up to the ministry. Um, yeah, for, for a high school in Beaumont, uh, to, to really help with the population growth that's occurring here. for for a high school in Beaumont to to really help with the population growth that's occurring here. And of course, just sort of generally speaking, we're always looking at initiatives that are going to help keep jobs local and to increase the the traffic of folks that are coming to Beaumont for a service or for work. That'll help local businesses as well and and help maintain local employment, which I think is is important.
Awesome. Yeah, I the reason I ask is because despite the world around us right now, there are some things to be optimistic about, both in our region and around Beaumont specifically. So thanks for taking the time to highlight some of those.
And just to touch on like the region specifically, like, you know, there's great development along the Nisku Spine Road. And, you know, as long as the job's nearby, then you it's it's going to help. It's going to help all the communities. But there's a lot of great work at the Edmonton International Airport as well and in trying to grow their cargo business. They've obviously taken a hit in passenger traffic. But they they've got an opportunity to focus on cargo and help grow that, which is a real benefit to the surrounding communities as well. That's not just centralized at the EIA. That that will that will be the 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 area that surrounds it. So this is a really good, strong transportation hub in this riding for and I I think of it always as Le Doo Beaumont. So I I know that I just have to preface that. But there's a lot of great opportunity here. And there's been strong growth in the last couple of years, and we can we can maintain that. And I know a lot of folks, you know, in Beaumont and Le Doo, you know, depend on our oil and gas sector, production's increasing. We've seen the price of, I think, WTI was just over sixty bucks now that Texas has a snowstorm and reserves are dropping in the U.S. But there's hope coming, and I encourage people to look at there. There's an economic update you can sign up for on the Alberta dot C website, and it'll email you weekly. And it'll show you that that there's numbers increasing in our economic activity and manufacturing and a lot of good indicators. So we need to get past these restrictions safely. And once we can do that, I think we're going to have a good recovery.
Awesome. Yeah, I've signed up for that one, too. So thank you, Chair Stowe.
Councillor Delock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we're short on time, so I'll keep on on to one question if I could. Thank you. Emily Rutherford, thanks for coming. Appreciate all your efforts, helping us out in other areas, as Sam mentioned previously. So thank you for your work there. One just one quick question on the police funding and rural crime. You mentioned possibly increasing funding through having municipality under five thousand start to contribute towards police funding. Is that the primary way looking at increasing funding for rural policing? Is that the government position at this point? If you can expand on that if you possibly can?
That's where I thought the taxation question was coming from. Sorry, that that was back in two thousand and nineteen that they did that, and that was to hire several hundred more RCP officers. They're also in the process of training sheriffs and fishing game officers to respond to certain types of calls to increase the the availability of a close unit that can provide assistance. And that's not going to be an investigative unit, but you get somebody, you know, to your call quicker to help you out. So there's a number of ways they're trying to close those distances rurally to help folks with with crime.
That helps to expand the answer. Thank you. Thank you, Brad. Appreciate all your efforts. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mute again. And seeing there for the questions, I'd like to thank Emily Rutherford for for his time and for covering all those topics and answering all those questions. It's greatly appreciated, and I think it's an informative and productive session. Want to thank you for all the work you do on this and and for for the other projects within Le Doo Beaumont. Most specifically Beaumont, of course. Thank you. We can do this again soon.
Absolutely. I appreciate your time. And as always, you know, as things come up and you're hearing different things in the community, don't hesitate to reach out. Happy to have a conversation about it and to do my part where I can to to advocate for these local projects and and initiatives that I think that are going to be really positive. So look forward to it. Thank you. Thank you.
So that brings us to three B. Environmental master plan updates. Do we have Johannes Mohn?
Yep.
Oh, hi, Johannes. Thank you. So what do you have for us?
Um, yep, this is the first of all, good good afternoon, members of committee, and thank you. This tonight is to bring an update for the environmental master plan. And before I go into the presentations and the update, I want to introduce two member of the team. Mister John Lewis and Jeff Robson, they are from the consulting firm Intelligent Futures, who has extensive experience in developing environmental plans and also community engagement, who will who are helping us on this project. So now going into the update, so we were here last October, October twenty twenty, before we just before we just started the the phase one public engagement. And so we provided an update and told you about what we were what we are going to do in the phase one public engagement. And now that engagement was completed and what we heard document was produced. So this is the time we think better to best to come back to update the the committee to provide you with what we heard on the project and to tell you a little bit about what we are going to do next. So Mister Robson will be using a PowerPoint presentation to guide us through the discussion. Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just want to make sure before I begin that you can all see my screen. I can just get a nod or a thumbs up. Thank you. So again, thanks for for setting aside some some time for us to speak this evening again. Here with my colleague, John Lewis, President and Founder of Intelligent Futures. I'm Jeff Robson, the Design Lead with Intelligent Futures and the Project Manager for the Beaumont EMP. So we're very excited to be working on this project, both it builds on our experience working on several sustainability plans throughout Canada. And then John and I have had the the pleasure of delivering EMPs for Red Deer and Banff. So very happy to be building on the momentum we've been generating elsewhere in the province through this refresh. So got a four step structure for the conversation this evening. So first we'll get into the challenge and vision for the project. Then I'll go in briefly to the the work performed to date. Then the emerging direction from the work that has been done. And then finally, the next steps. So we're all kind of on the same page and can talk further beyond the presentation. So as it relates to the challenge and vision. So the challenge that's in front of us right now as we work through this refresh is leveraging this opportunity to integrate and and again, really reaffirm the work that Beaumont has been doing on sustainability and the environment into the municipal decision making process. And then to use the planning process as a means to encourage both administration and community stakeholders to make bold and innovative and lasting choices in support of the environment. So no small challenge, certainly. And then the vision, and I should make distinct, there's the vision of the plan itself, which we're working on, and then there's the vision of what we hope will be the outcome of this plan at the end of the process. So this is focused on the latter. So we aim to deliver a refreshed EMP that will be integrated into the city of Beaumont in total, that it be accessible and user friendly, so people are excited and able to use it on a daily basis. And of course, again, to really advance this idea of innovation, so be a forward looking document that inspires collective action by the community, by local industry and by local government towards environmental sustainability. And doing so through strategic policy changes, day to day behaviors, tangible interventions that can be seen, and then ultimately towards fostering a culture of environmental stewardship. And so the work performed to date. We find ourselves roughly halfway through this process, this four phase process, with the anticipated conclusion being in July of two thousand twenty one. And so we started appropriately in the startup phase. So we met with the core Beaumont project team and hashed out shared vision and values for the projects so we could all work forward together on the same page. Got a lay of the land for communications and engagement planning to inform the both what has been done and what is yet to come. And then conducted a review of the the plan as it stands now from two thousand thirteen, twenty fourteen. Then we moved from that phase into the second phase, which was focused on having environmental conversations as a baseline to get informed about the project and really begin having the the vital dialogue we need on this on this project. So that was manifested through a key stakeholder workshop with administration, a community engagement program with the public. And then we analyzed the feedback from those streams and released a publicly available what we heard report in January. So we then find ourselves in the plan drafting. So we have the strategy sprint process ahead of us, which I will speak to towards the end of this presentation. And then getting into the formal drafting of the plan and as well, it's it's not on here, but we've performed some preliminary plan structuring based on all we've heard so far and have delivered some municipal benchmarking to get a sense of where other municipalities in Alberta are with respect to environmental performance, with particular reference to the Edmonton Metropolitan Region. And then we, once that's done, of course, we'll move into a review process. And then finalization, so providing administration an opportunity to review, providing an opportunity for community review, both to make sure we've honored what was said in the environmental conversations phase, but then also to ensure they're kept aware of any new outcomes that might have emerged from the plan drafting. And then we do aim as well to circulate it to other partner municipalities within the region, just to make sure there is alignment there. We'll commit all of the feedback that emerges and then bring it back to you in the summer for a final review from there. So just wanted to provide a bit of a review on kind of each of these elements I spoke to. So we began, of course, with a review of the two thousand thirteen, twenty fourteen era EMP that Beaumont has. So just as a reminder, I'm I'm sure I'm preaching in the choir on this, but it was approved by what was then Beaumont Town Council in October twenty thirteen and was focused on both day to day municipal operation and then longer term strategic efforts towards environmental impact in the community. The plan itself was divided into focus areas, looking at air energy, which was a proxy for GHG emissions, land management, sense of community, water and waste. The plan itself directed a review and update on a five year schedule, but that was then superseded by the strategic plan in two thousand seventeen for this EMP to be prepared. The meat and potatoes truly is of the actions that were proposed in the two thousand thirteen EMP, thirty two percent of them were implemented or are remain in process of being implemented. However, with the caveat that many of these actions were only partially implemented and have seen no new progress in recent years. And that is reflected in this chart. So overall, the orange for the color orange refers to never initiated. And there is a lot of orange on this slide. So this, of course, prompted a lot of good discussion as to like, well, okay, understanding this was the case from the previous plan, what are what's the structure we can put in place to prompt more progress, prompt more ongoing actions and and lead to more completion of action. So I'll speak to that later in the presentation. Moving into what was was discussed in the staff consultation. So we met in October twenty twenty with several people from administration. And the intent here was to really get a sense of the environmental issues in Beaumont as they exist in the ever evolving situation that is twenty twenty. And then identifying opportunities for success, for mitigation, and then how we might begin to measure success towards the outcomes of the plan. And understanding that the environment is an all encompassing issue, we were very careful working with our colleagues on the the city of Beaumont project team to fold in as many different voices from administration as we could, understanding that every a sizable portion of the organization is going to have a role to play in implementing the plan. So we wanted to fold them in as early as possible. And the responses that emerged from that consultation have since informed preliminary plan structure we've developed for the environmental master plan and then have introduced some potential actions that we're going to explore further in the strategy sprint in particular, but throughout the drafting process in general. So moving from the staff consultation, we we then enter into the the public engagement. And I'll just provide a brief summary here of the communication engagement efforts that comprise that. So working with our colleagues at the city of Beaumont, we conducted a three week promotional period in Lenuval Beaumont newspaper. And then cross promotion with age friendly and affordable housing engagements. So the three week promotional period, there was a brief run up time and then it remained in place for part of the engagement process itself. There was a continues to be rather a project webpage listed there. So during the the rough period of engagement and communications around it for two months, there was one hundred and eighteen unique visitors and one hundred and fifty two page views. And then on social media, there was four hundred and forty seven post clicks and sixty six likes. And that encompasses both specific targeted messaging about completing the EMP questionnaire or attending a workshop. And then indirect messaging around here is the range of engagement options currently available on offer by the city of Beaumont. We had forty one participants through the engagement process live from November second to thirtieth. So that was delivered through one on one interviews that sought to understand how people experience the environment in their day to day lives and then also getting into what potential improvements could be made. And then both online and paper questionnaires, there were thirty four respondents using that method. And then we did have as well a community workshop organized in as much as there was a roster of attendees, there was a an agenda, we had built the presentation, all the things one would need to host a workshop. And the night thereof, we spent about an hour waiting for the attendees, but alas, no one did show up. So I did reach out to the folks who are on the RSVP list and let them know both that there was more opportunities to get involved later in the spring and to complete the questionnaire. And so from the engagement process, we've landed on six themes that that became apparent. So number one is to increase and formalize the number of available waste management options in Beaumont. Two is focused both on efficiency and consumption of water and energy resources. So promoting renewable. and efficient water, energy and water use through corporate facilities, management and community incentives. So again, striking that balance between what the city can do directly and what the community will be prospectively called to do. Exploring low-impact urban development to minimize the environmental cost of urban growth, enforcing existing bylaws respecting waste management, vehicle idling and noise abatement. And then kind of getting into some of the challenges we encountered with engaging the public in the in in the second phase is fostering partnerships with local community organizations and neighborhood schools to act as functionally a force multiplier as to what the City of Beaumont has been i- is able to implement by broadening the available cap- capacity resourcing and increasing, I guess, the network of of people who could potentially be involved in implementation. And finally, as a corollary to that, broadening education and outreach efforts to motivate environmental action. So that's going to be very likely, particularly given our experience in the engagement phase, a key plank of the the EMP as it has developed. And so, given all of that, the emerging direction we have, both going into the strategy sprint next week and then going forward into the plan development in draft beyond that. The areas of concern we're looking to target with slight modification from the 2013 plan is focused on air, focused on community design. So already we can see some very good dovetailing with the municipal development plan and the transportation master plan, among other plans that the city has on the books. And then ecosystems, energy, waste and water. And then understanding that that bar graph I I showed previously, how do we prioritize for success? And here we're exploring a perspective reduction in the number of actions that will be included in the plan to instead focus on kind of the foundational moves that the city needs to do to to advance environmental progress. So we're looking there at what is most impactful and then what is most achievable. And then considering around collaboration, we believe it important to emphasize organizational capacity and partnerships. And then promoting participation from the public in in particular, through education, engagement and outreach. So while there can be some general campaigns there, I think as well, there's a real opportunity on specific actions to for any engagement that needs to be done to really try to increase environmental awareness and engagement through their delivery. And then finally, getting back to this concept of decision-making, making decisions without data is is very difficult and I don't envy you all as as people who have to make decisions often in a in a vacuum, it's it's difficult. And so what we would like to do is is really build the foundation here for a measurement and monitoring framework that the city can institute. So that over time, you can build up a longitudinal amount of data that allows just easier decision-making around substantive issues. More enables prioritization. So that's going to be a very key part of focus as well for us. And so to the next steps, what what remains in front of us? So as of late February 2021, which is next week, we've we do have the the three-day strategy sprint in place. And so we're going to be working with staff from drawn from across the organization to essentially present the the preliminary direction that we have for the EMP, go over issues of vision and goals at the high level and get a sense of what indicators would be useful from a measurement, monitoring framework on a feasibility basis. Then moving into what actions to will form the next five years of plan implementation with respect to the the actions we've emerged with from the 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 planning process to date. And then then moving into an actual implementation framework, which again is going to look at issues of of data collection of public outreach and engagement and then capacity building both within the organization, but then beyond into the community. And I would like as well to thank you all for dedicating time on the third day to attend and participate to provide your feedback based on the emerging direction. I I know there's a lot going on right now and really appreciative of the time taken to, I really think, set the project up to be in a really good place coming out of the end of next week. And so, once we emerge from the end of next week, we will then get into the drafting of the plan, which is really kind of attaching all of the 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 research and writing to the the existing structure that we already have in place. From there in April, we aim to to bring the the draft to circulation, both within the organization so that the people ultimately tasked with implementing, I do have the opportunity to make sure that we got it right. And then bringing it to the public for for review as well beyond that. And then finally, up to the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board. With all of that feedback from circulation gathered, May and June is going to be a finalization of the plan where we will both commit the feedback and then build the final document to bring back to you again, hopefully in July. And so with that, I will thank you again for the opportunity this evening to both speak to you about the EMP and again for your attendance at the sprint in a just over a week's time now. So I will open the floor.
Thank you for that, Mr. Robson. I will, let's take, actually, I'd like to start with a question myself, first of all, please. Could you just, as you're still presenting your screen, could you take us back to the the graph, the bar chart of the 2013, 2014 plan implementation?
Yes, just bear with me for a second. There we go.
Thank you. I puzzled over this for a while. I wasn't quite sure if I was interpreting it correctly, but but bear with me and and correct me if I'm wrong. So looking at those columns on the left hand, on the on the Y-axis, energy and GHG emissions, the 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 count, the numbers are the number of actions, projects that the EMP
So, yes.
Are proposed?
I I suppose, just to be clear on this point, because there is room for interpretation, there may be things that the City of Beaumont presently does with respect to any of these focus areas that were not included in the EMP. Thus, they do not appear in this graph. So there's, I guess, approximately sixty or so actions, I believe, all told from the 2013 EMP, and this is the proportion from that that are in place, have been achieved, etc.
I understand, at least I think I understand. So there might be actions on any of the topics that the city had taken, but if they weren't in the environmental plan, then you wouldn't have reflected them here.
Yeah, and so concurrently to this to this graph, we inventoried as best we could every environmental initiative the city conducts, factoring in what is currently on the books, again, in the MDP and in the the TMP with assistance from the City of Beaumont project team.
Okay, thank you. So the the what it was, what struck me about this straight away was was on the energy and GHG emissions there, we've got one in progress, one ongoing, and nineteen that were never initiated, which seems so of twenty, and I assume that's what the the X-axis is just the total count, right? So we've got a total of twenty-one in that category, of which nineteen were were never. So twenty-one actions were proposed by the plan, of which nineteen were never initiated.
Yeah.
I just wondered if you had any insight at all i- i- into why it was that high?
We
Why we initiated so few of those compared to what was proposed in the plan?
So that is a is a very good line of questioning. We, and I don't mean to dodge, we had found in kind of going back to 2013 and posing the question, you know, what's what's going on? And why, why did certain things that appear to have a lot of support through the plan not, why did they peter out? And largely, it seemed just by the lack of ability to track down the person in the organization who might be able to answer. It just points to the the plan at the time didn't do the the best job at allocating ownership to any one of these portfolio items. So that that posed an issue in terms of us being able to go back and say, why is this like this? What what issues were encountered in delivering it? So we can't, alas, provide too much additional feedback beyond beyond this.
Okay, thank you. So so what we're saying is, what what you're saying is then that because the those the proposed actions weren't clearly allocated, there wasn't ownership of each of those, it's very difficult to decide why they weren't or were initiated.
Yeah, yeah.
So then following up from that, then with the with the the new environmental master plan, then does that mean then that part of that will be to allocate ownership for for each of these initiatives or actions?
Yeah, so I think there's two parts I'd like to speak to here. The first is some of the actions from the the this era plan are very good actions and are worth following up to determine, does the City of Beaumont still want to do this? So we're going to spend some time at the sprint trying to answer that that question. And then to to the the thrust of your your question, yes, understanding some of the issues around ownership and and responsibility allocation that were that existed in this plan between how we structured the October conversation with staff and then the strategy sprint, we're looking to allocate a lot more responsibility, which isn't to say anyone dropped the ball, it's just the previous plan wasn't set up that way. So we're looking to bridge that gap. We might not be the most popular people at the end of the third day of the sprint by being taskmasters and allocating these actions to the folks.
No, I completely understand, and I'm not trying to assign blame here. I I what I want to do is to, you know, if we have a plan, then I want to make sure that we've got a way of implementing it, or at least knowing why it is that it didn't get implemented. Thank you. Are there any? Are there any further questions? I see Mayor Stewart's already got his hand up. So over to you, Mayor Stewart.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, appreciate it. I'd like to thank the presenter and or Mr. Wong for for putting this together, just so we realize that this is a more of a process update than a content update, and we're about to dig into content. But I'm gonna, I'm I'm gonna go down a similar rabbit hole to to the chair. I was really kind of disappointed to see that that we we hadn't implemented things. And so my 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 bent here is to be a little more proactive, because what I really hate to do is spend a lot of taxpayer dollars on putting these plans together and we get a great plan and it looks good. We congratulate ourselves and then it goes up on the shelf. And and then we never see it again, which is which is what apparently happened to our last EMP. And so I guess, could you speak, you you spoke to it a little bit, but how do we make sure that this is actually a usable plan that gets incorporated day-to-day? I mean, there were sixty-some actions, is sixty-some actions reasonable, or should we be focusing on a little more? And then I have one follow-up.
Sure. Bit of a hedge, sixty actions could work if the actions are tailored to, you know, fit within what we're asking the organization to do relative to each action. My initial feeling is the city would be better served and to your point around really making a plan that gets implemented on the day-to-day by focusing on fewer, more impactful actions, again, that really build the core foundation of what the the city needs. We we do have our ideas of what that is now, but we're looking forward to the strategy sprint to check the validity of those ideas and and get more ideas. And, you know, once, once the core is in place, so again, bringing on more public interest in environmental management and conservation, making it clear what benefits that does have for the community and and indeed the organization, and then building the data framework and instituting the partnerships that I think can help make implementation easier. I think at that point, whether that's the next plan update in five years or a decade from now, the city will be really well-prepared to kind of go into very particular areas of environmental inquiry to respond to challenges we haven't thought of yet.
No, and I do appreciate that and glad it's all being taken into consideration as we moved into the content portion and drafting the plan. When I read the what we heard reporting, things like that, there was reference to energy rebates and and programs like that. But I didn't notice if there was anything related to like the Clean Energy Improvement Program or the PACE program. Would that be sort of considered in this framework, or is that a sort of a standalone program that the that the municipality could run?
I think I through the plan drafting process, we'll investigate in particular what options are available at the level of the what we heard report. It was more, here's what the community says. But I wanted to have the opportunity to meet with the staff writ large to determine first, is this an avenue of inquiry? We want to proceed down further. Is it feasible before getting truly into the weeds? But if if you may, sorry, that's the PACE program and then the the clean energy.
Yeah, the Clean Energy Improvement Program, just like the Kohl's Notes version of in St. Albert, just completed a market study on this. The Kohl's Notes version is you pay, the city would pay for improvements to people's homes, like in terms of energy efficiency upgrades, furnaces, windows, insulation, and then they would pay it back on their taxes
Right.
over a set number of years.
Yeah, that that is a tool that would certainly be relevant and applicable to the incentivization side of community action.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to 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 make sure that we hit that one. Sorry for the acronyms. As soon as that people knew what I was talking about, and I should never do that.
As a as an urban planner, I definitely appreciate where you're coming from on that.
Yeah, no, appreciate the hard work and looking forward to seeing, looking forward to participating in the three-day sprint or the end of the three-day sprint and and looking and looking forward to the draft. So thank you very much for for tonight, appreciate it.
Councilman Newkirk? Yeah, thank you. Lots of information here. And as Mayor Stewart said, you know, it is an update on where you're at and kind of a check-in. I just want to take it very high level for for quick hitter, quick question, quick answer. I'll keep them as fair as I can. What is the point of the plan? Go.
So the point of the plan is to bring a lot of good work that Beaumont is doing under its existing planning framework, interpret that through an environmental lens where possible to provide that additional kind of impetus towards realizing those actions and then achieve positive environmental progress on those listed focus areas, which together will help address and mitigate the broader issue of of climate change.
Okay, no, that's good. And how how will this benefit our residents in Beaumont?
So there's a number of 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 different ways that will happen. There's obviously the environmental health impact, so related to quality of life of residents. We're looking as a planning principle to really focus on resiliency. So what steps can we take here to Um, we're looking as a planning principle to really focus on resiliency. So what steps can we take here to um? Make the city of Beaumont a resilient place for its citizens, so? Um, mitigating, I guess, the worst effects of environmental challenge, environmental catastrophe. Um, we're looking at ways that um the envi- environment can be stewarded um in a way that's cost effective and makes sense financially for the municipality. Um, so and then there's additionally a um? In a, in it, corollary to the quality of life, the cultural heritage recreational aspects of the environment that we we want to emphasize as well through this plan.
Okay, um, the planner hat on the gate again, this is, so you said that, um? Maybe if you could comment a little bit on how the balance between um a plan such as this and the desire for um community and economic growth, how they how they work together, how they can work together? It seems the world doesn't think that uh it can improve while maintaining some economic strength and um and and growing. Um, maybe if you could speak to that a little bit, just this high level.
Yeah, so I think on the community side, um, certainly I've seen a lot of examples just in terms of the outside is one of the few places we can all safely go right now. So so protecting those natural resources um for community enjoyment um is uh both um, I think a moral imperative, but also it's a it's a really practical benefit that a community can offer. Um, it is a a market differentiator um in terms of uh the uh what environmental offerings a community has. In terms of the economic side, uh one thing we are um looking at is uh how issues of resource management and efficiency, particularly obviously in the corporate municipal side, um can be uh brought to bear to uh help uh the city meet its financial goals. So looking at where efficiencies can be um found there that help the environment while uh still ensuring uh you remain in the black.
Yeah, no, and I think that's that's good. The, you know, I guess my point is is that you know, you can have an environmental master plan, and that doesn't stymie your your ability to develop and grow as a municipality, and there's always things to improve on and do better. Um, just one last question, Mr. Chair, a really quick one. Um, were you satisfied with the volume of feedback that you, Jordan, have you noticed noted that as a challenge? Twenty twenty.
That I I wouldn't be lying if I said I was pleased with with the the feedback we've received so far. Part of that, I I don't want to make excuses, but asking people to think about the future in November twenty twenty was potentially a tall order. That being said, um, there was some important lessons we took from that, both in how we might alter the forthcoming engagement process as uh we bring the plan back to the community. And then also, I think the important messaging of? I think it's often easy, particularly like I'm so in deep on this plan, to just assume that everyone's right there with me. And of course, that's not the case. So? To not take for granted the the work that needs to be done to induce that environmental interest. And so to use, again, the plan itself, um, the implementation strategy of it to really motivate that environmental action. So? You know, maybe we're at forty one respondents in November twenty twenty, but by twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three? Does the number of people who really identify strongly with the environment and want to participate in its protection, its management, its enjoyment, does that improve?
Yeah, great. Thanks for answering those questions. That's all from me, Chairman. So?
Thank you.
You had your full there, Steve. Councilor Von Haas.
Thank you, Chair Stoudt, and thank you, Mr. Robson, for the excellent presentation. And uh, thank you, Councilor Newkirk, because that was my question, the last one there. But I'm going to follow up a little bit further um about the uh the engagement, and I I think you're on to it, Mr. Robson, for sure. Um, in terms of building people's interest by getting them more engaged in the actual science and activities around the the environment. And uh I I won't take your time with it, but I just um? Uh, want to put a couple of names out there. Ri- Riverwatch Institute of Alberta has a program called Creek Watch, which is citizen science and outreach. And it's it's those kinds of activities, I think, that get young people and their parents engaged. And it becomes real. I mean, COVID was the realest thing we had to deal with a long time and ever. And it took a lot of energy to deal with that. So I'm not surprised in November that this didn't draw a lot of people. Don't beat yourself up on that. I think that had to do with, you know, crisis wins every time. So um, I really do appreciate what you're doing, and I and I hope to see more, and I will be attending next week. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Councilor Delrock?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Robson's presentation. Uh, a very quick question. I'm not sure this is part of the report. Um, or a part of the analysis you'll be going through, but uh the Urban Canopy um discussion we've had in previous times is very definitely very much part of the environmental footprint within our our borders. So I'm not too sure if your report will be talking about the urban canopy idea and how it uh would have would benefit Beaumont. Uh, could you speak that briefly if it's a part of your report? If it is, if you could expand on it, as you could, please?
Sure. Um, yeah, uh, so with respect to to that in particular, um? The the focus area that belongs to, in in my mind, um, is ecology. So again, the management of urban biodiversity and uh repairing areas, um terrestrial environments. And um? Yeah, or or certainly urban canopy is something we're considering as part of of this environmental master plan. Um, and is a perspective, again, we haven't confirmed it yet, but it's a perspective indicator that we can use to measure the um efficacy of the implementation of the plan over time, because it's a a visual um, a visual sign that you can track using aerial photos.
Thank you. Uh, one last observation, but could, Mr. Chair? Um, Councilman Newkirk touched on this point moments ago about how it's going to affect the citizens in Beaumont. Uh, this type of environmental master plan, I think it may be hard to quantify the benefit to our citizens versus something else like a uh restructuring plan of your sidewalks, who are very very visible, very tangible. Uh, I'm not being critical of the idea. I just just want to hope and hope the report can give us, when it's finished, tangible ways to measure it in terms of how to benefit our citizens. I'm sure that's the intent, but just another word of caution that this is something I think can be easily not seen value, is not presented properly or communicated properly. So a challenge for us will be taking this plan upon it being finished and actually making it as uh Mayor Stewart suggested, not on the shelf, and making it viable and making it workable. So uh I'm looking forward to seeing the final report in July. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Robson, for your presentation. And Mr. Mo Wong, as always, thank you.
Okay, I see no further requests to speak, so I will move that the committee of the whole receive the environmental master plan update reports as information. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call the question. Will you use your voting buttons, please, or advise me if you can't? I always have to stop and do a count of how many green buttons I've got here. Uh. Okay, thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wong, Mr. Robson.
Thank you.
That presentation.
Thank you. Good night.
Look forward to seeing you next week, I guess.
Yes, we'll see you then.
Yep.
Very well, that brings us to, actually, we've been going at this for six twenty one. I'd like to call a five, uh, sorry, for one twenty one. It's now six twenty one. Um, I'd like to call a five minute recess. Welcome back to Committee of the Whole Meeting, February sixteenth, twenty twenty one, uh, back from recess. And we're moving to item three C on the agenda, the much awaited, much anticipated, eagerly awaited uh Performing Arts Center reports. Mr. Suter, would you like to lead us off, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, committee. Um, yes, I'm very pleased to be here tonight uh to present the Performing Arts Center feasibility study to be received for information and gather some feedback from the committee. Um, we'd hope to have this back in the fall of twenty twenty, but for a variety of reasons, we got delayed on this particular small project. But I'm very pleased to be here this evening um on this topic. It is, there's been a mountain of work that has been put into this in the background, and and our friend, Mr. Schick, will speak to that here shortly. Um, just to back up a little bit, um, the scope of this project was to provide um a feasibility study looking at previous engagement, previous research, uh, recommended size, recommended amenities, as well as operational models and potential locations in in the city of Beaumont for what the one day construction of a performing arts center. June sixteenth of twenty twenty, um, the initial draft report was presented to committee of the whole. And the takeaway from that for administration and for uh the consultant with RWDI was to look at some different options for uh both operationally as well as potential sites. And I'm going to turn it over at this time, Mr. Chair, to Richard Schick. He's with us this evening all the way from Shawnee and Lake. And he's going to give us a very high level uh picture of what he's been working on. I it's it's a very uh in-depth report that he has prepared, but he's going to touch on some of the key points for us this evening. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Schick.
Thank you, Paul. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, so we did, we did three, we did three studies. Um, going from the very very general to the very specific, basically. Um, first study was May thirty, was May um last year, second one was January of this year, and then the third one was February of this year. The um, in the the first study, which was much more comprehensive, I should say that you you really should read all three of the documents in 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 together, because the the they kind of support each other. Um, the, as I said, the first one was more comprehensive. It had um, it had a um, a a bit of information on citing. It had some of information on operations. And what we, what that um, that study was based on the BSA requirements that you did with the commu- community consulting with the um, with the arts groups. And and so we provided three options in that, in that um, in that that study in terms of her development. And that that was uh in relationship to the needs that was expressed by the BSA. And and the first option was the full, full, the full thing, every, every, all of the needs and wishes and desires in. And that came in at about a fifty six thousand square feet, roughly a forty one million dollar cost by our estimate. Uh, included a included a four hundred seat theater and a small black box studio theater, as well as some of the arts uh spaces. Uh, option two was more modest. It was forty one thousand uh five hundred square feet. And we estimated approximately thirty thirty, just over thirty million dollars in cost. And then the third option was much more Spartan, at thirty one, thirty one thousand square feet at a twenty three million dollar cost. That re- that reduced the, that took a lot of spaces out, took out the the gallery, took out the um, took out the um, the black box theater and left uh le- left um the the show. Um, we also calculated the facility footprint, because we didn't know what site, there was no site identified. So we wanted to, wanted to say, you know, if you if you had each of these three options, what would, what would be the facility footprint that you needed or the space you needed on a site to put this facility? Because we know that you don't, you don't have a um, you you you, the stage and the audience chamber and the lobby are all on one level. But the dressing rooms, the green room, the custodial rooms, those things could be either on a second floor or in a basement. So it would be de- reduce this, the 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 footprint. So you want to, you want to be able to not identify a site that will actually accept the theater that you're promoting. The the other thing we went through, we did a a extensive uh, um, uh, study in what the operation should be. And I think we recommended that a nonprofit society uh operating the theater on your behalf would probably be the best paying for your buck. And uh, but I want to say that, um, whenever I say that, I want to make sure that everybody understands is that's not a, that's not a blank check for the for some groups to run the theater. What they're doing is they're uh, they're providing uh cultural services on your behalf. And there are a very, it's a, it's a very responsible, can be very onerous, uh, um, a task that has to happen. Uh, and it's not just, like I said, a bank Christ check. Then in, then in, and in in January this year, um? Paul came to us and said, there's a possibility of putting a theater on on the library site that would be just north of the um, just north of the of the library and of City Hall. And uh, this is a really good site. And the the marriage of libraries and theaters are a good marriage, because they're, they they tend to work in opposite hours, so that your parking lot loading and those kinds of things are are not um? Are 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 staggered. You have, the library needs additional space, which the theater could, which the, which the theater development could provide in terms of meeting rooms, uh, breakout rooms, um, all those kinds of things. We didn't have any discussions with the library. We took, just to took a stab at a basically placeholder, so that we could generate some costs. And we said that, again, we did three options, uh, um, all in. Now, this is all in, this is not, not, this is a theater and library spaces, not theater and arts spaces. And all in, we estimated, we've somewhere in the neighborhood of forty three million, forty three thousand square feet, just over thirty million dollars in cost, a modest of forty mi- forty thousand square feet at twenty eight million dollars. And a Spartan at thirty one thousand square feet at twenty two million. Um, at this point, we also looked at the possibility of going back and doing a renovation of the large room in the community center. Now, that at first, at first, um, blush, that looks like a, like a real uh sort of opportunity, cost saving. Uh, but in fact, it 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 really isn't a very, very good, we don't think it's a very good option. One is that the the needs of the theater, technical needs of the theater, are going to so affect the the room that it will lock out a lot of the users who are already using it. That we're bringing in new users, but but at the expense of 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 locking out those those uh current users. Because the, again, having a um, having the kind of technical uh requirements, you need blackout, it needs to be painted differently, you need seating in it. You need a control room, you need dressing rooms, you need all those things, and it keep, we keep adding those things, uh, and adding those things. And and it 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 isn't, it it doesn't really lend itself to a, to a really sweet renovation. The third study we did, we um, we looked at at more specifically uh, um, the, uh, a partnership between a school and uh, and the a community theater. We touched on that in in the first study. Um? There are, there are considerable savings and considerable reasons why it it's a good marriage. And we made it um, at a modest, modest theater this time, at twenty seven thousand square feet, roughly eighteen point five uh million dollars, because what we would assume is that there would be some uh, uh, infrastructure that would be carried by the school, by the school system, some mechanical rooms, electrical feeds, um, uh, site development, those, those kinds of things. And that would reduce the co- reduce the square footage and reduce the cost. I caution you about a partnership with the school. Um? It it can work, it can, it can work very well. But you always have to understand that the priority that the school has is in education. It isn't in, is it, isn't in performing arts. So they see the the theater, a theater or an art center as a classroom, whereas you'll, whereas the community would see it as a presentation space. So the room finishes, the technology involved, all of those things are a higher level in uh for a community theater. I mean, and there's some awful stories that I can tell you that we've even, you know, we're doing a theater now in Vancouver. And it's got a twenty, it's got a dressing room loading of twenty four people, but because the school is so worried about security, there aren't any washups. And so the cast And so the cast has to go out into the lobby and use the same washrooms as the public at the same time that they're loading. And so this, and it's a school theatre, it's not a community theatre, so the, the, the school, that's, this is the kind of priority the school had, and it takes precedence. So you, so if you do go down this road of school theatre and, and a partnership, the, the, the community has to know exactly what you want, exactly what the partnership can give you, exactly who's doing what, who's going to operate, and, and what kind, how you're going to make your decisions. And normally, what usually happens is the, a theatre that's, that's on the school site with a covered walkway connection to the theatre, but still operates as its own profile, is usually a, a, a nice marriage. Now, there, there is, there is one issue that has come up in all of these studies and all of the scenarios, and it's, it can be a limiting one, and it's one of the, one of the side things that limited the renovation of the community centre is parking. For a four-hundred-seat theatre, you're, you're going to need roughly a hundred and seventy-three parking stalls, just for, just for a sold-out house. We estimate somewhere between, somewhere around two-point-three people per car for a performance. If you're going, if you're doing multicultural events, or you're doing children's theatre, the, the loading is higher because the, those, those attendees tend to come in family groups as opposed to on a date, excuse me. So a hundred and seventy-three parking stalls is, it's quite a, it's quite a large, um, large area to cover, and costly, anywhere from ten thousand to twenty-five to thirty-thousand dollars a parking stall, depending on what you're doing and where you're building it and what the land is like around it. So, um, and, but here's the thing, without that, without that parking, it's, it's almost impossible to make, to make, it's, to make sales. If people can't park, they simply won't come. The other issue with regard to schools is schools tend to be built in residential neighbourhoods, and if you don't provide the parking on-site, then the overflow parking goes into the neighbours around the neighbour, neighbourhood, and it drives, and it drives the neighbours crazy because now, almost every year, there's people parking all over their residential neighbourhood and their friends can't park there, and it's always just a problem. That's one of the, 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 the big downsides of the community centre, there, there, there was just no parking. In order to make it work, you'd have to, you'd have to buy up the property between the, 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 the centre and the, and the corner, the street corner, and add the parking there. There isn't enough street parking, and again, you would be spilling off into, into residential neighbourhoods. So that, Paul said he want, you wanted a, a high-level overview, and, and that's why I think I've done that, so I, I'm here ready to answer any of your questions.
Just unmute myself. Thank you, thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Schick. A couple of quick questions I had, and before I open the floor. Am I right in thinking, of the three reports you've attached, the first one's dated May thirty-first, is that substantively, or, or even identically the same as, as the one that was presented to council back in June, and, and therefore the other two?
That's correct.
The new information?
That's correct, that's correct. The, the, the basis of the, of the, of the, the January and February one is still carried in the, in the, the, the first document, because fundamentally, this is the same, we're just getting a little bit more focused on, on a library site, school site, whereas the first study, it was, it was, it was a bit more general.
Yes, okay, thank you. I just, I just wanted to confirm that I hadn't made a mistake when I was reading through that. I, I, yes, respect the point that you made, that it's, it's kind of important to read all three in the context of, of one another. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that overview. I've got a couple of other questions, but I'll open the floor first of all. Are there any comments or questions? And I see there are, so councillor Van Newkirk, over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Stote, and to the presenter, thanks for coming in this evening and soldiering through and getting us to this point. I want to talk about pricing. We've seen these numbers from you in the past, and each time the conversation passes, I don't believe that they're where they need to be. I think that the feedback that this project is continually given is that, you know, thirty million bucks is a non-starter, and, you know, we continually see twenty-three, thirty, and forty million dollars. So what I've seen is that this project isn't, isn't listening to council and isn't hearing, you know, the conversation around pricing. So if we further, if we further think about that a bit, in the RFD that was put in front of us, administration has been prudent in putting the capital planning for, I think it was twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, they were prudent and allocated thirteen million dollars to, you know, to this type of a facility, and they have that planned into the future. In Beaumont, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we just got done building a Beaumont Sports and Recreation Centre, and the price tag on that was thirty million, and I, I find it really hard to believe that we're into the moderate option for a theatre at thirty million bucks. You know, I'm not in the business, but I, but I just, I still find it hard to believe. There are people who are in the business that I've run these numbers by, and they say it's incredible. Where does that come from? You know, thirty-four, I'm sure you can build something like this for thirty to forty million dollars, but for me, the pricing misses the mark. I think this is the, it's the second time for sure, maybe the third time that we've seen these numbers, and, and it's missed the mark. It's oh-for-three on pricing for me. I understand the, the report, I understand, you know, the, the factors that go into these things, but this is oh-for-three on pricing for me, and that's where I'm at, so.
Well, um, yes, you're correct. The, the, these are, these are expensive buildings, because they're, 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 they've got a lot of high-end finishes, they have a lot of infrastructure in terms of electrical and networking, and those kinds, those kinds of things, they're, 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 they have a high, a high level of equipment, you know, just, just equipment alone for a, for a four-hundred-seat theatre with a fly tower, you're into one and a half million dollars just, just to equip it, uh, uh, you know, and to build it, we're estimating somewhere between five hundred and six hundred dollars a square foot on an average, because of course your, your loading dock is going to cost that, but your, your audience chamber is going to be, is going to be very expensive. Just to put in perspective, I don't know if you, if any of you've been out to Camrose to see the, to see the theatre in, in Camrose, the new theatre. That, that was built in, must be five years ago now. Now, that was a design build with Clark, they did a great job, and a lot of the infrastructure was provided by the university, but the calculations that we made with Barreider, who was the architect, that, 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 that theatre in the end ran twenty-eight million dollars.
And that's the period.
It, the, the, there aren't a lot of high-end finishes, there aren't a lot of, there aren't a lot of, there aren't a lot of, of things that drive the cost that way, but, but the, the real problem is, what you've got is you've got large spaces. You know, for a four-hundred-seat theatre, you're going to need, uh, twenty-eight thousand, three thousand net square feet in the lobby to handle those people, you know, and that, that, that is going to cost you not six hundred bucks a square foot, but it's probably going to cost you twelve hundred or fifteen hundred bucks a square foot, because of course, the, the, uh, the, the finishes are high, and you've got a lot of free spans, yeah, and, you know, but you wouldn't be the first person that, that looked at me and said, ooh, thirty million? Are you out of your mind? But I can tell you that that's, that's the prices we're seeing. Oh, the other thing, the other, the other, the other thing that you, that you always have to factor into costing is the gross-up. Is a gross-up for a theatre is, is pretty high. This is the difference between the net square footage, which is the paint on the wall to the paint on the wall, right? But the gross adds in the circulation space, the exiting, the risers, the ductwork, a lot of the mechanical rooms, a lot of those things that are, that, that aren't, that aren't specifically in the billing programme. So your, your gross-up factor, well, let's, let's put the worst gross-up factor is if you wanted to build the Wind Spear Concert Hall, that gross-up factor is probably one and a half, one hundred and fifty percent for every square foot of usable space, you're going to have one and a half square feet of unusable space, wall thicknesses, stairwells, circulation. Now, in, in the costing we've done for these, we pulled it down into the sixty percent of gross-up, and of course, as you get into more into design, you can reduce that. The school, the school just because you, the school could carry a lot of the infrastructure and their existing infrastructure, we put the gross-up as forty-five percent. But that's why a lot of times these buildings get expensive really fast. So I can't, it's the only thing I can tell you, that, but as I said, you're not the first person to, to go, are you, are you out of your mind?
Yeah, it took the words from my mouth, so thank you. I'll let Mr. Hendricks have a shot at that, too. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. So, yeah, just as a, as a side comment there, I noticed that we, that you do reduce the gross-up factor for the proposed extension to the school, right?
Yeah.
Consequently, the price is, is down to, down, um, to eighteen, to eighteen million, was I correct in that?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
And, and there are some, there are some other factors involved there as well as just reducing the gross-up.
Yeah. Now, you can get, you can get the gross-up factor way down. When we did Persephone Theatre in Saskatoon, they didn't have a lot of money. The gross-up factor was twenty-five percent, but, but you had to go through some rooms to get to other rooms, because what hap- what we cut was all of the, all of the circulation space. Normally, it's nice to have a, have a, a corridor that surrounds the stage, so that you can go, one door, go around the back, come in the other door, you know, and it makes a nice circulation. At Persephone Theatre, they don't have that. They, you've got to go through different spaces. If an actor exiting stage left has to go through an office, and then through a green room, and then into a back corridor. So, so, you know, that, those are the sacrifices that you make. You know, when you're planning these documents, a, a planning document is really a stab in the dark, you know, until you actually start to get to design, and, and once you, once you start into design, then you can start to, you can start to reduce the, to reduce the, uh, um, the, um, um, uh, you can, you, my, 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 the, my wife just passed me a note, the guy has come and cleaned our driveway, and now he wants to be paid later. Um, so the, the more you get, further you get into design, the more specific you can be, the, the less the gross-up is, because now you can, now you're designing specifically to a site.
Right, I understand. So there is some scope for price reduction through reducing the gross-up factor?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You know, but, but, you know, I would be, I would be irresponsible and remiss if I said to you, oh, you can do, you can do this for fifteen million dollars, no problem. You know, and, and, and sometimes, I can be frank with you, is we've come in where you've had a, not a theatre person, but a, but a, you see a, a management company, or accounting company, or somebody doing a, doing a study for a theatre, and they, they come up with a cost, and then we're hired with our architectural firm, and the, and the price goes up thirty percent, because the, they haven't, they haven't made the allowances that you need to make.
I understand, thank you. Let's do it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. I'm just gonna, I want to bring the conversation back to what we need to do tonight. And so I was looking at the, there's been a lot of information presented, and, and I really do appreciate it. There's lots of detail, lots of numbers, the numbers are quite scary, but we, but council needs to focus on what, what, what its next steps are going to be. So if council is seriously considering moving this project forward, I think we need to look down further in the RFD where, and look, and look at that steering committee. And this is where I would go tonight. If we're, if we're seriously, if we're serious about getting an art centre in this community, let's, let's start recruiting that steering committee. Let's go find those experts, let's go find a construction person, let's go find a theatre person, let's go find an accountant, let's go find those high-level peoples that can do the fundraising, and, and put together a steering committee of, of high-level experts. I mean, that was some of the best, best piece of advice I got recently from the mayor of Stratford, to come in, analyse all this information, and start focusing down over the next twelve to eighteen months, because quite honestly, we're, we're making some big purchases here. And so we're, we're going to be looking at my, so focus over the next twelve to eighteen months, and put the program together, find the spot, work on design, work with administration, and get that done. And so that's where I think we need to be tonight, is not necessarily talking about the numbers and how to get it down and do the gross-up, and pick a spot. If we're going to go through, I, I would suggest tonight that, that we move forward, let's get the steering committee, let's get it up, up, up and ready, and let's, let's focus on getting this, getting this project built. Mr. Suter, does that sound like a reasonable, reasonable thing? And then if we were to implement the steering committee, what would your sort of timelines be on, on recruiting those people? Bearing in mind, I'm looking for experts, not necessarily the general public.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Stewart. Yeah, the RFD does speak to that, because administration would recommend, we, we have this included in the two thousand and twenty-three capital project, so in order, if that was to stay on that timeline, the next step would be formation of a steering committee to gather all of the work that Mr. Schick has done and beyond, and narrow down and get it to where we come back to council with a proposal for that two thousand and twenty-three budget. So we need to move on this, if we're going to move this project along, that is the next step, as you alluded to, Mayor Stewart.
So if we accept this report, so now, now we're going to process, so if council is amenable to this, and we accept this report as information, will that initiate the steering committee recruitment process? And when, when can we see that list of names back to council?
I don't have an exact timeline on that, but yes, that was been our position, that we would just move this process along as we've already included in the five-year plan, so the next step logically for us was get that steering committee, collect everything, nail it down, and time is running out to even hit the mark there, so we have to move on that in short order, I would suggest.
Well, yeah, let's let, yeah, I'd like to move on the steering committee and see the, and see some results on that by perhaps June, if not sooner, but I'm not necessarily so worried about hitting the two thousand and twenty-three capital budget, I'm worried about doing the proper project for the city. So if, if timelines elongate a little bit, I'd rather get the right facility at the right price that's going to meet our needs than, than rush this through, and I don't know what council's thinking of that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the report for information and proceed with the next steps of the steering committee, and open that up for debate from, debating questions from members of council. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you for moving there, so that's on the floor. Could I, Mr. Suter, could you, I just want to confirm as well, acceptance of the report, the RFD also includes the inclusion of a, of a twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two, bring forward for council consideration a capital project for the construction of an arts facility, but there's no actual budget amount attached to that? I'm assuming that would be, well, first of all, bringing that forward is included, is part of accepting the report, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair, yes. The next step for me would be to form a steering committee, it's all part and parcel if this project is to continue.
Okay, and there's no budget amount attached to that? I am assuming that that would arise out of the work of the steering committee?
The budget amount for the actual capital build you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, for sure.
I, I wouldn't get too hung up on, on a capital request for two thousand and twenty-two. Let's let the system, let's let the process play out in its natural form.
Fully understood, that, that there's many a slip, twixt, cup and lip, yes, absolutely, and that we're, you know, we're now proposing budgets for, for subsequent councils as we're in the last, as we're in the last year of this council, or we're, we're asking for budgets to be put forward to future councils, but also understand that that is, that is part of what we're being asked to, or what's being suggested we should do here. All right, councillor Hendricks?
Uh, thank you. Uh, to Mr. Schick, uh, the last presentation, uh, we had a discussion regarding different options. One of the options discussed was the CCBCC, and one of the options was discussed was the Charlie White Theatre, and the Mary Winspear Theatre, and how it rolls out in Sydney, B.C. as compared to how we could potentially do the same thing here. Uh, I'm not hearing anything about that, those discussions. I, I did provide full intel on everything from design, layouts, video, uh, all the equipment, you know, the success rate they've had. I've, I've also provided the, uh, attendance, uh, shows, style and type, um, you know, it's run by a nonprofit. Uh, just wondering why that, that's just not getting any traction at all?
Well, I think, I, I think, um, it's, um, I mean, it, it's a, it's a good model. Um, I have some, I have some issues with the, with design, that there, there could have been some, a, a bit more thought, and a bit better, uh, designs to the community, but that's, that's just technical. Um, it's well-run, it's, uh, it's in, it's, um, in a, it's in a good neighborhood, it's in a really good location, it's right on the highway, you can see it, um, so, and it, and it, 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 it is married to the, 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 the community centre, which means that the theatre shares a lot of the, shares a lot of the infrastructure that comes with the community centre. Uh, it's, it, there's no question that, that's, that's, that's doable here. Um, the, the, you could, uh, and, and I did look at attaching, attaching it, attaching a, a, a theatre to the community centre. There isn't quite enough property to do that. Uh, it's a bit too tight, you'd have to either, do something with the senior centre, or you'd have to, you'd have to buy up some property to the, to the east of you. Then, but you're still stuck in that site with a parking issue. The, um, that, you, you, you don't have enough, enough space to, um, for parking, as opposed to a library site, which you could put some parking on the site, but it's got parking lots and other places in the surrounding area where people could, uh, where people can park, and you can provide a drop-off. It works. So, um, um, that, as to your question, I thi- think that, that Mary Winspear is, is a goo-, is a good model. It really, it really works, it's a good community centre. Is it, is it transferable and applicable to you guys? That's, that's tough, because the, the nature of, if, if there was more land around the community centre, yeah, absolutely. And then you could, you could build on the, some of the infrastructure that's already there. Um, but I'm not sure that that's, that's possible to, more study could be done on it, um, to see, to, to see what, what, what could be done, um, but I'm not, I'm not sold that, that it's really gonna give you something for the future.
Well, let, let me just interject, uh, what I did, it, it was not only just meet with their people at Mary Winspear, I also got all the drawings and documents of the design. And then I took the footprint of that design and overlaid it onto the CCBCC. Uh, keeping in mind, it's, it's three hundred and ten seats, not four hundred.
Yep.
So your parking count does change. And when I see what we have in Beaumont for overflow, and when I see what we have already in Ashfall, uh, the numbers work. And I asked them, how do you handle your parking relative to the rest of the centre? And it's a scheduling thing. Uh, they don't schedule everything at once. Um, and so that's how they overcome it, because their numbers in parking, by my count, was less than what we currently have, and what we would, what we would be able to do on the CCBCC site. So, to me, there's a, there's a fix there, because we have a CCBCC that's costing us a lot of money every year in lost revenues. We, we have almost the Mary Winspear Centre without the Charlie White Theatre. If we could just park that piece onto this package, and when I get the math that they paid at that time for that, and if you do the construction means index from there till now, you know, it's very doable in Beaumont. But if, if we keep pushing the narrative that, you know, we're gonna have to come up with these other numbers, like, you don't need to put, uh, any kind of a team together, because there's no money. You, you can't physically get the money out of Beaumont, it's not here. So, either we make something else work, or we don't, we don't get this next team involved, because they're running into a, a situation where they won't get to the finish line, because the money is just not here. So, we, the money has to be part of this equation, in my opinion.
When did, when did you talk to them about parking? How long ago was that?
Uh, I was there, was it last, you know, pre-COVID? As, as a councillor out of Beaumont. And, and joined a show over there. So I, I, I stopped in, uh, had, had a, had an opportunity to, to witness, uh, you know, a fantastic show. Um, you know, they, they have a lot of really interesting people coming to their, their theatre, I mean, really high-end people. Um, so, it was, it was, and it was at the, uh, the, the lady, I can't recall her name right now, I can check what, where I got my documents from, maybe that was from her, but, uh, she laid out sort of how they overcome, because they do weddings, they do all sorts of things, right? But they won't have a Charlie White Theatre package and a full-blown wedding going at the same time.
Yeah, because they're, because they're running, they're running both spaces, so they have, they have management control over both spaces.
That's correct, that's right.
The other thing you can do, too, is you can, you can, you can space out start times, where you have one event in the, in one room and one in the other, but you don't start them at the same time, you know? Now, the, the reason I ask about when you were there, is they just, uh, they just built an emergency services building.
Yes, it is.
And they lost, they lost about half their parking. But remember that there is a ton of street parking and around there. And the other is, the other thing that we have on the West Coast, um, although, uh, looking outside right now at the piles of snow, is normally you don't, you don't have the same, the same issue with, um, with the, the weather affecting your, your people coming and going from the theatre and parking, and having to walk any distance. You know, it, it, because our weather's better, you know, it's, it's not as cold. And, uh, so, uh, that, that does help a lot. Uh, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a decent model, I mean, uh, other than some of the design issues with that, that happened with the theatre, um, uh...
Well, you're not, you're not gonna get two, uh, designers to agree to anything, right?
Well, I know, but, but, you know, the, the only, the only way you can get into the control room is walk through the audience chamber, so, you know, and, and you have to crawl on your hands and knees on the catwalks to focus the lights. You know, those are things that are, those are things that are unforgivable. Um, uh, but, but, but that's, but that's, that's technical stuff, that, you know, all those things are solvable, that, you know? So, yeah, it, it, you know, it, 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 it may be doable to, to put that on site, I, I, um, I would, I would, again, parking would be my, my, my biggest issue.
Yeah, but again, it's three hundred and ten seats, not four hundred.
It is, yeah, yeah. Well, I think you're probably, you're, you're, at four hundred seats for you guys, you're probably future-proofing yourself a bit. Uh, at three hundred and fifty, you're probably good, uh, for, for the time being, but anything less than three fifty is probably a bit too small for you. Because remember that, when you're sizing a theatre, you, you have to think about what your gross box office can be. You know, at four hundred seats, at four hundred seats, at twenty bucks a ticket, that's, that's eight thousand dollars, you know, uh, what can you buy for eight thousand dollars? And what does it cost you to run it, uh, to rent the theatre? So, those are issues that, that, that need to, that need to be looked at. So, um, and that, the other thing that you really wanna think about is that you wanna build, you don't wanna, you don't wanna build something that is, that just covers you for now. You wanna build something that, that will all come back here in twenty-five years and is still gonna be used. It's not just a stopgap to, to, to get something rolling, is you want, you want something that's gonna develop, develop the community, so you want something that's a bit more polished and a bit higher-end, I think. Um, but that doesn't mean that you couldn't do that, uh, uh, as per the Mary Winspear. And the, the room finishes there, and the, the way it operates, it's, it's a pleasant building.
Okay, thank you.
I'm muted, Martin.
Martin, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Um, cool, tell that. Um, okay, we still have, thank you, we still have a motion on the floor. Um, I'd like to get away from some of the detailed design issues, if we can, um, and address the motion directly. Um, Council Monkoff Swain?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I'm Martin. So, and I'll speak to the motion, um, I will do that. Um, but, but to be honest, I'm not quite sure what we're doing here now. Um, you know, we might not like the numbers that have been presented to us, but these are the numbers the consultant's telling us, um, and MS Admin completely disagrees with this report, which I don't think so, or else they wouldn't have put it forward, you know, those are the numbers. Um, we've got a consultant telling us that we need to spend thirty million dollars to be able to do this. I'm not sure what a, a steering committee is gonna do. Like, I, I get the concept of what you're trying to do, um, Mayor, in terms of localizing it, driving it, and moving it forward, but ultimately, if the numbers are gonna be around thirty million dollars, I think everyone here is frustrated at, at that price, because we wanna build an arts facility, but to, to Council Hendricks' point, we don't have thirty million dollars to, to spend. Um, so, again, I'm not, not sure what we're doing. It, it's no point getting a steering committee to, to come down, they're not gonna drive down the, the cost for us. Um, the reality is, is it's gonna be in that, that upper echelon, from, from what we're hearing. Uh, no one's contradicting these, these, these numbers from administration here. Um, so, and, and again, very, very unpopular comment here, um, but, you know, if, if the numbers are, if the numbers are that high, and council is saying we, we, we don't have the appetite, uh, to spend that in, in the, in the short term here, then, you know, do we, do we look, do we consider, um, you know, taking this off administration's plate for twenty twenty-one, at least initially? You know, we've got a great foundational document, we know roughly what it needs to be in, save the, the numbers, but, you know, that information is there. Um, do we, do we just focus on, you know, bringing more business and paying off the debt? Um, you know, we don't, we definitely don't need more studies on this, I can tell you that much. Um, but, I, I'm not sure what a steering committee's gonna, it's not gonna tell us anything different, um, unless, unless, um, you know, John or, or anyone else has any thoughts. Uh, I, I like the idea of a steering committee to make it more localized, but if we're, we're not prepared to spend thirty million dollars, then what are we doing? So, um, but, but, I, I'd be interested in council's thoughts on that, but that's, that's my two senses. Uh, again, incredibly unpopular, I recognize, we all wanna get this done, uh, but we also need to be realistic, and we need to give administration, um, some, some proper direction here on what we're looking for them to do. Um, and I don't think they're gonna be able to get us, uh, um, get us what we're looking for, um, based on that, on those, those price points from, from what our debt limit is right now and, and what we have. So, those are my, my two cents on it, so, um, that's speaking to the motion vaguely. So, bring me back, John.
May, may I speak to that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please do.
Thank you, appreciate that. And no, and honestly, Council Monkoff Swain, I, I hear you, and I'm there. Um, if this, if this motion doesn't pass, um, then that, that would be the next one, is to, is to, is to kill it for, for the time being, based on, based on the numbers. Um, my, my point of, point is, 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 is getting, bringing the steering committee into this, is if we can find those experts, we can find the funding sources, maybe we don't need to, maybe, maybe we don't need to fund the whole thirty million dollars ourselves. And like, and honestly, the whole thirty million doesn't really affect me. But if we can find those people that are connected, um, to the, to different levels of, levels of government, or private, private funding, or can make those partnerships, um, and bring, bring the funding, bring the funding pieces as part of it. And you know what? The steering committee in twelve to eighteen months may find out that, yeah, it's just not entirely feasible, and, and then, and then, and then the project dies. I don't wanna see the project die, but if council doesn't have any appetite for it, I would, I would support a, a follow-on motion to kill the project for a couple of years. But that steering committee, if you find those experts, and you find, uh, and you, and you find the right people, and they're, and they're connected, and they can do the work, and they're not gonna put it, like, this has gotta be somewhat of a working committee, they can't be putting it all back onto administration to chase all these leads. Um, and so we may have to, might, they might be coming back with a bit of a budget ask to be able to fund their operations and things, um, which council would have to be prepared to consider in June, July, August, or whenever it came back. But my point is, is if we can find a group of, group of experts, local, engaged, um, highly knowledgeable, to, to start driving this forward, um, that's really gonna tell us that this project is feasible. They'll be able to take the three reports, distill it down, find a spot, figure the, figure out the actual construction budget based on, like, further refining the needs and, and things like that, and they can take a harder look at the CCBCC, and if we have to build a parcade or buy some land, I don't think that's all off the table. Um, but my point is, is like, if we're not prepared to take that harder look, and, and let a group of experts drive it, and then, then I agree with you, it's time to kill this project, and the, the next council can take it up, uh, when they're ready. But that's, that's my thinking.
Yeah, and, and to be, John, and, and, you know, we've all had good, good conversations, we've got an arts council that's, you know, I think it's had one meeting yet, so we, we wanna give them a chance to, to develop, and, and really, they should be along here providing the, these recommendations in, into council. Um, you know, I, I totally agree with you that there are other sources of funding, and we've all heard that about, not all gonna be on the municipal, and how do we work towards that? But, but it's not gonna save twenty million dollars, right? Uh, and so, I, I, I just want council to have a, a hard look at this issue, and, and, you know, it's nice, the nice, it's, it's great to keep it going and keep the dream alive, but if the money isn't there, and we're not prepared to do it, then let's focus on something else. I'm not saying I'm there, I just think, I want us to have that hard conversation, that hard look at, look at ourselves, and, um, do we, do, is, is now the time to, to potentially throw that out? Maybe, maybe not. Um, do, do we give the arts council a chance, the steering committee that, that you're talking about, a chance to, to push this forward? Um, maybe, I, I absolutely agree, this, this can't be something that is done, um, on the side of, and, and I, I don't mean this disrespectfully, Mr. Suter, but I, you know, Paul's juggling a million things, um, and we, at some point, we're gonna have to give direction, where are we serious about this, get that local steering committee, or do we, we let it go and focus on other things and, and, and build that back? So, that, that's all I'm saying. I, I wanna, I wanna give folks a chance to be able to weigh in, um, you know, I, I, I don't think it's fair to just make a broad discussion without hearing from the arts council. Um, I'd love to see them here, and they should be here at this table, and that's what we set up that council for. So, I just, I want us to, to take a hard look at this, essentially, and, and not just do the easy thing, which is, you know, set up a steering committee and, and see what comes of it. So, but those are my comments.
Yeah, and just, I agree with you, but the problem with the arts council is they haven't even run a recruiting process and have no people yet. And so I, I don't want it to be stalled out while that committee gets itself going, sort of thing. So, anyway.
Thank you both. Council Bahner?
Thank you, Chair Stowe. Well, there, there's a lot of information here that, uh, I'm trying to absorb, and I, I wasn't expecting your motion, Mayor, and it, it kind of has me, um, not wanting to go there yet. Maybe by the time I actually call the vote, I'll admit it my mind. But right now, I'm where Council Monkoff Swain is. I, I, I feel that this is a, a decision we have to make, whether we're going forward or not, before you set up a steering committee to steer to go somewhere we don't know where they're going. You know, if we, if we don't set some kind of a price limitation, or terms of reference that talk about, you know, it, we want it to be here, or, or, I mean, a, a steering committee made up of who? I, you know, I'm, I'm really concerned when I hear that the arts council hasn't been able to get up and running yet. Well, how are we gonna get a steering committee up and running if we haven't got the arts council up and running? So let's walk before we run? It just, it just feels like we're trying to rush this thing through, based on what the experts have told us so far, we need a lot more money than we have. Unless we wanna say these reports need to go back to the drawing board, I don't wanna spend a lot more money on reports either. Why, why aren't we accepting what we've got? This is what the experts are telling us, this is what you're gonna hear. We cut it back and say we want less, maybe what we're saying is we wanna phase it in? Is that an option? And I'm gonna ask Mr. Schick that question. Is there any way to build some of this, and then build on, like we've done with the rec centre?
Uh, yes, you can, but normally what happens with that is you have, uh, you build the, you build the theatre, the audience chamber, the dressing rooms, and then you add other art spaces over time, another, another studio theatre, another multipurpose room, those kinds of things. Uh, our experience has been, once you've, once you've built the core, the community moves on, and doesn't come back, uh, to, to upgrade it, but that's... If, if I could just take a second to just, um, address the steering, the steering committee issue. Um, of course, what I'm doing is, uh, in many cases, a lot of... Of course, what I'm doing is, uh, in many cases, a lot of, a lot of, um, guesswork in terms of what do you think the community needs? What do you think they can live with? What do you think the cost could be? You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, um, a lot of, um, eyeballing things. A steering committee will be able to focus, focus things. In other words, they can focus on a site. They can focus on the style of the theater. They can focus on what other things you have to put in it. And from that, you can get a more accurate cost. What you're doing is you're just fine tuning the work that I've already done. You know, and it could possibly be that you can reduce the cost because, um, because I'm, I'm hedging my bets because I'm still sort of poking in the dark. You, you understand what I mean? Is that, that, you know, the, the more specific we can be with your needs, the more specific we can be with, with the spaces you need, which the steering committee could do, the, the, the more, the more accurate the costing is.
And over to you. Sorry.
Sorry, had you finished, Ca- Counselor Barnhart?
Not really, but I, it, I, I guess one last thing I would say to the mayor in order to support your motion. I, I would like to know the terms of reference in the steering committee because I'm beginning to be even more confused than I was when you first mentioned it. Is it the Arts Council that you're saying is gonna be set up as the steering committee? Same people? Is it experts in fundraising? Is it experts in building, construction? Like, who, who are these experts? And, and, and are they, are they Beaumontians? Are they people that have to pay the price of this? I mean, I, I really, really think we need to know what the terms of reference are before we say to the administration, this is approved, go forth and create a steering committee. To me, that's too, too much too soon without really having done a homework. So that's where I'm sitting right now. Thank you.
I've had a request that we clarify the motion on the floor. As I understood it, at least, it was as written on the RFD paper that we received the reporter's information, but that does have implications as well. Mestu, would you care to clarify the motion, please? Or restate the motion?
It's that the committee will receive the performing arts center reporters' information and refer the item to administration to proceed to the next steps of assembling a steering committee. And quite honestly, Counselor Barnhart, that could be bringing back a terms of reference, that could be stepping us, stepping through those stages of, of impaling that. Honestly, I, I envision the Arts Council to be local people. And I have these experts that I'm thinking of may or may not be local to Beaumont, but yes, they're, they're going to be experts in fundraising, experts in construction, like, they're going to be, I'm thinking of a high level. Yeah, I'm not, I'm thinking that the Arts Council will advise this work, not necessarily lead this work.
Thank you. Counselor Manikuk, second go.
Hey, but thank you. And I'll kind of continue off of Counselor Barnhart's comments there. Thank you, Counselor Barnhart, on the steering committee and who they are. And when I read the RFD, it says the steering committee will review information, research, and site options, be asked to provide inputs on the scope of the capital build, operational models, funding sources. You know, it would bring the committee back to engage all stakeholders as part of the process. So to me, this sounds like consultant work. Mr. Suter, can you clarify how we would get volunteer, a volunteer steering committee to do this? I don't, I just don't see that. I, I see this as more consultant work that needs to be done to guide this. And, uh, you know, it's, maybe you could give some clarity. That's my first comment and, or my first question, and then I have a follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I do agree with you to some degree there. There is some consultant work still to be done if you're gonna push it forward. But the steering committee, I think we're overthinking a little bit here. I think it's, it's really just some key local people that are already have been involved in the background on some of this stuff. As, and whatever work that, taking all the research, all the information that Mr. Schick and others have compiled and, and, and coming back with what makes sense for Beaumont. And I think it's very laser focused. I don't think it's a long process to get to that point. Then you would turn it over for either consultant that would go on to some design potentially down the road. But at each step, they would come back to council for a decision. There's no real decision this evening that's being asked. This is just advising, report for information we were asked to provide. And the steering committee would be, in my mind, the next step administratively to go forward if, you know, on this work. So I don't exactly have names for you or the exact makeup of that committee, but I don't see it being a very difficult, large committee to pull together to focus on this work for a few months, I would imagine, to get some of this stuff compiled. So we have some direction that makes sense for Beaumont in all those areas that have been our year to good.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, what I would say is, I agree with that vision, but what, what I experience and what I see is volunteer fatigue in Beaumont. And there's only so much time that folks have, you know, that we're willing to do this. And, and I bring it back to the dollars and cents. You know, we've heard one price from one person. If we had two more goes at this or something and, you know, three people told us that 25 million is the number, well, then I guess I just continue to be frustrated with that being the number, but it's validated, right? Like, right now, we're going off, we're going off one number and that's, you know, that number is a non-starter for me. You know, if we're building the steering committee, what are we doing it for? What are we gonna end up with? Where are we gonna end up? What do we need to do to empower that steering committee to actually make the decisions? The site options that they wanna discuss, quite frankly, the site options all have budgetary implications themselves. And so, you know, how far are they gonna get down their conversation before they have to come back to the council three times to talk about those different things, right? Like, I really see the steering committee, or I, I don't, I understand that we wanna keep the project moving forward, but I don't understand how the steering committee is gonna do that, given these large budgetary considerations that are in front of council.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Monka Swain?
Yeah, so I'll speak directly to the, to the motion on the floor. You know, the discussion, I, I, I thought about it a lot, but I, I don't, I, I don't support the, the motion and, and here's why. We, we stood up an arts council for a reason, and that was to get them to advise council on all things arts and culture in, in the city. And I wanna give them an opportunity to get stood up, come back and, and, you know, look at this information and, and present to, to council. So, and then, then if, if talking with them and, you know, that they agree that, yeah, let's go to steering committee and let's get laser focused, as Paul said, then, then at least we've heard from them. I, I don't wanna skip that step. So, so for me, I, I, I'm gonna be voting against it. I, if that, if that fails, I, I do have a draft motion to, to bring forward to, essentially to defer this until the Arts Council is, is stood up. So, yeah, that, that's, that's just where, where I land. I, I wanna make sure, you know, we, we thought it was prudent to, to get the council, an arts council stood up. Let's hear from them. They're missing from this, from this piece. And it's on, it's on them to get, to get stood up.
Okay, thank you. Who is next to speak? Counselor Hendricks?
Thank you. One ask I'd have is, is that we explore the CC-BCC, the, the way I've outlined it. It's our only hope. And, and I'm not a, I'm not an arts theater guy. I'm a counselor and I can see the math. I had this conversation the last time out. I thought we were gonna explore this. I thought this was gonna come back as an option. Just at least we've explored it. When I look at, if I take the Spartan issue relative to gross area and square footage, and I take out common components, art components, multipurpose spaces, gallery components, administration, billing services, I'm left with 18,000 square feet based on this design on 400. Well, how can I not make this work if I'm using the CC-BCC for the other three quarters of what I need? And I already have infrastructure, parking. I have what I need to get this done. This idea that it'd be a standalone jubilee auditorium in Beaumont is just not gonna happen. We do not have the money. So if, if we wanna keep pushing that button and saying it's that or nothing, it's nothing because we just can't physically do it. So we have to look at this. And I brought this up at the last meeting. I'm, I'm respectfully asking again, can we please have a look at this thing based on the Charlie White Theater program? That would be my take. That would be my only hail mary pass on trying to make this happen. Otherwise, it's just not gonna happen. And to run people through this whole exercise of trying to raise funds and naming rights and other levels of government, been there, done that, been there, done that. No hope, in my opinion, of that happening to get to the numbers we need to have. There is no hope. So let's not waste everybody's time. Let's, let's not have a, a false narrative in terms of where we'll end up and how we'll get this thing built. And we'll, we'll bring in dollars and we'll, we'll find other, that's not gonna happen. So please, can we at least explore a CC-BCC? We know we've got a, a budget issue at the CC-BCC. This would help supplement, this would be my solution to two problems. I think that's the only solution we have to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Mestu?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I can see where the room is going with this and, and I, and I appreciate the comments from my colleagues and my fellow counselors. And so I'm gonna modify, gonna modify my motion towards the committee of the whole receive the performing arts center report as information. Uh, and then, but we wanted to defer the item to, until a future committee of the whole, when the Arts Council stood up and has an opportunity to advise the council on this matter. But that we continue on a terms of work, but that we continue the work to develop a terms of reference for a steering committee that, that Arts Council can then look at too. And we'll move forward that way. So I will modify my motion that way. And Counselor Hendricks, I hear what you're saying. Unfortunately, that type of decision has to get, actually get made at a council meeting or the steering committee. What we can do tonight is sort of what we can do. But I like your way of thinking.
Let's have the spirit of that and let's try to get this done for these people. That's all I'm trying to get.
Yeah, and I'm trying to keep this project alive and keep it moving forward too. So. Um, and so I appreciate that. And so I will modify my motion for that to, to be that way. So the committee of the whole receive the performing arts reports information and defer the item into a future committee of the whole when the Arts Council is stood up and has an opportunity to advise council on the matter as well as continue work on the terms of reference for steering committee. I would like to see, however, that administration puts some effort into getting Beaumont Society of the Arts to get a recruitment process started and then let's get that committee moving. Because it's been literally almost six or seven months. I know COVID's been a problem, but this is now starting to stall out my, my arts center. So.
Thank you. Counselor Danlock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, Counselor Danlock, could you just hold on a moment? I, I just wanna give Mr. Schwertz a chance to respond to, to Ms. Stewart. Mr. Schwertz?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, through the rest of the council. You got a pretty long motion in there that talks about next steps moving forward. We've also had a suggestion by Counselor Hendricks that we specifically look at the CC-BCC. And then the mayor has just said that now we actively recruit for the Arts Council. So the CCC, CC-BCC stuff is gonna take some resources. We need a motion. And the piece about actively recruiting the Arts Council, we're also gonna need a motion. I need, I need support from, from four people on councils. We're getting too many opinions flying around here. And that's what's gonna lead to a disappointment.
I apologize, CAO. That was more of a, I wasn't really looking for administration to actively recruit for the Arts Council. I was more sort of making a frustrated point that, that it stalled out and more asking administration to push the Beaumont Society of the Arts to actually do their, to do their own recruitment process. So I didn't mean for that to, if that's what we took away with that, I apologize. That was not my intention. But if we start making too many of these decisions, then I'm gonna make a motion to bring it back to council so we can have, make some actual decisions. I think we're starting to make too many.
And, and I really don't want to lose Counselor Hendricks' notion. The rest of council did not weigh in on that. That's, you know, that was shared based on, on his opinion. I'm, I'm not hearing for or against from three other people. So that puts us in a little tight spot as well. And then we just keep disappointing each other.
Yeah, so, yeah. And so I don't, I don't wanna do that. And so if we need to, to refer to, refer this matter to council for decisions, then, then, then I was hoping to speed this process a little further, but we can very much bring it back. So that's where we're at now?
I think that's what we have to do, isn't it? Is, is, all we can really do is accept or reject this report in a committee of the whole. If you want to do the other things, recruit for a council, recruit for an arts council or a,
I don't want, I don't want administration recruiting for the Arts Council. I want the Beaumont Society of the Arts to do it. They're, they're, that's their part of the partnership.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
I don't want us to be recruiting for the Arts Council. That's the Beaumont Society of the Arts' responsibility, according to the partnership we have with them. I want to see it happen, is what I want.
Okay, so as it's, is that motion that you made, is that, does that still stand?
Well, after discussion with the CAO, I'm gonna modify the motion to accept the report as information and to bring the item back to the further council meeting for decisions on the following items. As we've laid them out. So steering committee, CC-BCC, and and moving the Arts Council forward.
Now, that can work from our perspective, but I'm almost, Counselor Danlock, let's die anyway.
I'm sorry, Counselor Danlock, over to you. You have the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my comment is gonna start off with asking Mayor Stewart to consider changing his motion just simply accepting the report for this evening. And we're with steering committee at a later time. I'm concerned about the steering committee not being able to fulfill its obdigate, objectives we outlined before. So the motion's been changed already, so that comment is no longer valid, I guess. But having said that, I'm sitting back in the, like a pig in the weeds, listening to the conversation. And I recall Mr. Schick's comments way back at the very first presentation that his pricing was on the conservative side. Not knowing exactly how conservative, but on the conservative side. And what concerned me at that point, as well as this evening as well, is that the report does not include the cost of land. If we didn't go forward with the library location or CC-BCC, we'd be looking at land acquisition costs on top of this. So that limits our choices personally, I think, to look at the CC-BCC, as Counsel Hendricks has so passionately outlined. And I think there's some validation to that, as it said on that committee, as council knows. That building is running a deficit in the high, mid-high six figures every year because of lack of utilization. So the CC-BCC location for a future discussion is a valid one. I'm concerned that, that the estimation on cost don't include land. So I'm glad Mayor Stewart has revised his motion, which I think I can support to accept the report this evening and come back to a later time to talk with the steering committee. And because I want this project to go forward, I think council does too. But it has to be done forward in a cost-effective manner that suits our needs and our fiscal ability to maintain the property going forward. So I'll stop at that point, Mr. Chair. And I may come back in a moment. I've been kind of waiting for a while to have a chance to speak. So I may have a, a follow-up thought, but I'll yield the floor for now. Thank you very much.
Have I got any more requests to speak? Yes, I have. Okay. Counselor Monka Swain?
Thank you. Um, so we're going kind of round and round on this and I'm not quite sure I followed the, the latest motion from, from the mayor. I was satisfied at the point where we accept this for information and we, we bring, we defer this to a future committee of the whole meeting. Once the Arts Council has got a chance to stood up. I, I like that because it puts the onus on them. I, I don't think it should be the city of Beaumont trying to help push them along. They, they know their, what they're required to do and, and when they're up and running in a, in a position, then come back. So I like that option. That's where I would be. It's all right. I don't know if that is a new motion on the floor. If you're just throwing that out, I'm not, not quite sure, worship. But I like the original one, nice and cleaner. Just move it to a, a future committee of the whole. I, I do speak to Counselor Hendricks' point. You know, I, I thought, and this is my fault, but I, I thought that was the direction that we've given multiple times to look at the CC-BCC and bring us that information back. So I can see the frustration and I'll channel and double that. And so if we need to go to another council meeting to, to have that vote, then, then yeah. But I mean, we, we're spending so much time on this consultant stuff and, you know, ultimately that, you know, what Counselor Hendricks has shared, I, I thought we were there. So to simplify that, just for, for tonight, I think the motion just needs to be that we accept this as information. to simplify that, just for, for tonight, I, I think the motion just needs to be that we accept this as information and we, we defer this to a future committee at the whole meeting, when the Arts Council has a chance to be stood up and can advise us on, on the next steps. That, that, that's, that's where I, where I land. So, um, yeah, I'll, uh,
So you're asking for a friendly amendment there?
I don't know if that's a friendly amendment. I think that's completely opposite the direction what, 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 where it's going. Sorry, I, I don't, I just vote no for, for that motion and, and, uh, put a new one on the table. Or we go back to the original friendly amendment? I, I'm not sure, but.
We haven't listened on the first motion yet because it's, it's, um,
We'll, we'll clarify the motion, but the CAO was the way in a bit here.
Yeah, Mr. Schwartz?
Just trying to help with the process here. And I think what councillor Monkoff Swain just suggested can work. We get the mayor to withdraw his motion, get councillor Monkoff Swain to present his, we vote on that motion. What we could do specifically for the CC-BCC is if we get council support, and I, what I would recommend is we bring back a quick report to a regular council meeting that will outline what it's going to take to analyze that CC-BCC. It's probably going to take some resources. Set aside a modest budget or we find the money within and we present that to you and you vote on it four to three, and then we have our marching orders. I think the simplest way to get through this and to satisfy everything I've heard is to go with the motion that Monkoff Swain just made.
I'm on board as long as it advances the project forward. So if I'm drawing my motion in favor of councillor Monkoff Swain making his, I will withdraw my motion and yield the floor to councillor Monkoff Swain.
Okay, so you withdrawn your motion, Maestus Stewart?
That's correct.
Thank you. Councillor Monkoff Swain, do you have a revised, would you? I'm not going to make you say it again.
Pardon me, I posted in the chat that the committee of the whole receive the arts center report as information and defer the item until a future committee of the whole, when the Arts Council has stood up and has, you know, opportunity to advise.
Thank you. Yes. Are there, all right, I'd like to get this to a vote. Are there further comments on the motion as currently configured?
Councillor Hendricks has a, wants to.
Councillor Hendricks?
But I just want to make sure that Mr. Schwartz has enough now to in fact get after the CC-BCC review. Under the, uh, motion that's now been placed here from councillor Sam Monkoff Swain. Is there enough meat and potatoes there to get you to that point and get you some funding to get that work done?
The suggestion I would make is, sorry, did I just cut you off, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
A suggestion I would make is immediately after this motion that you direct administration to bring back a, a report to, for further analysis of the CC-BCC as an option for performing arts theater.
And I'm assuming our, our city clerk just recorded that because that's the motion.
Yeah, and then we can bring it back to a council meeting and, and throw some meat behind it.
Okay, let's keep this procedure in order, please. Councillor Monkoff, uh, councillor Hendricks, are you willing to make that motion? After we've, after we've, after we've voted on this one? Not yet.
Deal with the motion on the floor.
You got to vote first.
There is a motion on the floor. All right. Are there any further requests to speak? I see only councillor Hendricks. I assume you haven't lowered your hand. Very well, I will call the question on councillor Monkoff Swain's motion. Please use your voting buttons and again advise me if you can for some reason. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Councillor Hendricks, I believe you have another motion you want to make.
Yes, and I'll use the word ditto. I don't have the exact word. So I'm, I'm assuming that, given that we're on tape, uh, we've got it recorded. Okay, so I'm moving that the, the recorded version of Mr. Schwartz's motion, uh, be the, uh, motion stated in the record. And I look forward to, uh, uh, calling for the vote. So thank you.
It's been a fun meeting, you guys.
Can we do that? Can we extract a, a motion?
I have no idea what the motion is. Somebody, please remind me.
I, I need it more, I need it more clearly than that, please.
Okay, the calls.
If I can.
Okay.
Please direct, uh, direct administration to bring back a, a, a report to regular council to conduct a feasibility study specifically to do with the CC-BCC and, and, and a performing arts facility.
Eric, can we make that motion at COTW?
The, the motion is to refer it to a council meeting, so yes.
You're directing me. You're not spending any money.
We're directing it to come back to a council meeting. To make that decision.
All right, specifically. Is that your motion, councillor Hendricks?
Uh, word for word.
Thank you. Discussion of the motion. Seeing none, I will. Oh, I just saw you move councillor Monkoff Swain. That wasn't you saying, you was getting ready to vote? Okay. I seeing no requests to speak, I will call the motion. Please use your voting buttons. And that passes unanimously also. Thank you. I think we have completed.
And if I can, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to share the resources that I have regarding the Mary Winspur Center, uh, with the administration. And I'll forward that to Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you for that too. I believe you've shared some of that with me already.
Happy to do it again.
And, and well, it was a very interesting read. I've also done the virtual tour of the Mary Winspur Center online. All right, we are now 7:47. We've been at this for over an hour since the last recess. I've got a request to take a quick break, so I am going to call a recess for five minutes. Let's say, let's make it 10. So we'll meet back at 7:58. Let's call it eight o'clock. 12 minutes then, please.
Appreciate that. And, and thank you, Mr. Schick, for your time tonight. Uh, really do appreciate your coming in and put it, that, you, you did a great job. You put a whole lot, lot of high-level information together that's really going to help from this process as we go forward. So, yeah, let's not understate the amount of work you did for us and we, we do appreciate it.
Thank you. 16th, 2021, um, after recess, we are now on item four, which will be closed session. Could I get, uh, ca- someone to make a motion to put it into closed session, please? Councillor Barnhart?
So moved, Chair.
Thank you. Would you please indicate your votes using the voting buttons? Call the question now. Can I see them all? Now that passed. Welcome back, Committee of the Whole Meeting, February 16th, 2021. Um, we are now back in, we are now out of closed session. And that brings us to section five of the agenda, councillor inquiries. Are there any committee members wishing to make an inquiry? One, two, three, seeing none, I will move on to item six, information items. Are there any committee members wishing to provide information to the committee? Um, seeing none, I'll move to emerging issues. Are there any committee members wishing to raise emerging issues with the rest of the committee? Still seeing none? Very well, I will. Oh, councillor Dunlop?
Just wanted to say, Martin, uh, great job as a chairman of the committee of the whole the last eight months. I think your last meeting was today, so, uh, congratulations on eight months. It went by really, really fast, didn't it?
It did, yes. Um, you're correct. Thank you. Um, it's, uh, not my natural forte, to be honest, but, um, and it's, everything's been done by Zoom, which makes it also less than, um, well, it, not, as my daughter would say, in ideal. But, yeah, you did the best you can and, and get to the result that we, get to the result that we can, as best we can. Anyway, thank you, Bill. Appreciate that. Um, it's your turn next, I gather.
Yep, I have everyone else's shoes to follow in now. So I'm the last guy to hopefully not drop the ball in the next eight months, so. I'm all of you ahead of me and I will learn to make sure I do everything. And you guys all did it well as chairman of committee of the whole. So I look forward to my eight months, uh, following in all of your footsteps. Thank you very much.
Well, you can also, uh, you can learn from mistakes as well, I guess. Is the, is the, is the upside to that, to going last. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, in that case, I am going to declare this meeting adjourned. Time is 8:22 PM. Thank you very much.